Great, we're all here. Well, welcome everyone. Let's see, we'll start with the roll call.
Trusty Wells.
Here.
Trusty Lawson. Trusty Marquez.
Here.
Vice President Diazolco.
Here.
President McAvoy.
Present. All right, so we put out, report out on closed session. We heard from staff and we accepted the recommendation. And let's see, the next thing is welcome everyone. We're so happy to have you all here tonight on our virtual meeting. Bienvenidos si necesita interpretación española por favor llame al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno pound. Para la contraste y gracias bienvenidos to our Spanish speaking friends. Welcome. All right, so thanks everyone for being here. Let's see, I also put it in the chat one more time. So we're all good. Okay. All right, um, thanks everyone for being here. We appreciate um, all the participation at our board meetings and we continue to get lots of emails with all sorts of ideas and resources and all of that. So thank you. We will get there working together. We realize this is a complicated time for all of us um, in our own personal lives as well as education and getting us all back um, to where we want to be. So let's see, onto the business. I have posted in the links how you can speak to the board. So there is a Google speaking form. So fill that out and we'll call on you when the agenda item comes up. If the agenda is, if your topic is not on the agenda, I will call you under oral communication. And it looks like so far with the number of speakers, you'll have three minutes. And if you need translation, you'll have more time. Let's see. Um, as a reminder, this is a board meeting meant for board business. With COVID, we certainly have opened it up and we are adding regular communication around COVID-19 and reopening all of that. So we certainly welcome your um, attendance tonight. And as I said before, if you have questions for the board, you can always put them in the Google Doc. We do have the chat feature open and that will come to the panelists. But we do ask that you try to keep the conversation to a minimum because it is distracting as we're trying to do the board business. But certainly if there's a clarifying question or something quick, put it in the chat and we do try to get back to those either during the meeting or after the meeting. So I think as a reminder, because this is virtual, we'll take all uh, votes via roll call. And Janet, anything I forgot?
Not on the welcome, no. You did good.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so let's see. Uh, welcome. Did the report out. Okay, changes to the agenda.
I'll propose that we move the two second readings um, of the board policies as 14.2 and 14.3 to consent.
All right. And I was wondering about 14.8. That's the National Urban Alliance. I don't know, were there any specifics that we needed to talk about with that? I know we're adding on to their contract. And I know we're going to be talking about equity, I think, at our next board meeting, right?
I already talked to Dr. Won this about that.
Okay, all right. So I'd like to propose moving 14.8 to consent. As well. Is that all right?
Say that one more time. I didn't hear it.
Moving 14.8, that's the contracts for NUA to consent? Okay, we just have a big agenda, so. Anything else? Any other changes? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Maria?
I'll second.
Janet, second. All those in favor? Oh, actually, a roll call vote, please.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Trusty Lawson.
Aye.
Trusty Marquez.
Aye.
Vice President Diazolco.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, well, we're on to oral communication and I believe we do have one speaker. That's Anna Salario. Kyle, do you see her in the chat?
Yes.
Okay, great. So Anna will bring you over now to speak. You'll be able to-
She has the wrong version of Zoom, so I need to promote her to panelist and then-
Okay, that's fine.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. Um, first of all, thank you so much for the opportunity and the time that you gave me to speak with you. Um, mainly, I wanted to meet with you today. I emailed you my letter before ahead of time because I know the time that we receive to speak is very short. Mainly um, is to ask your support for all our classified members. I think many of them are here. And uh, we need your support as the board to mainly is to receive a compensation, some kind of compensation for all, for all the classified members that are working right now. Because we, we know and we appreciate that we have a wonderful teachers and they deserve the, the extra compensation they're receiving. But also, we want to be um, also, we want to receive and be treated the same because our jobs also had increment a lot, like the same like the teachers. And even though we request this to the district office, I was denied. So my letter explains more about it, how our jobs have incremented. And mainly, I'm here together with my other classified members to request your support, the support of the board. I don't know if you guys had the opportunity to read my letter, if not, but mainly that's why I'm here. And um, so um, in my letter, I explain how our jobs are had increased and responsibilities. And most important part of my letter is just to tell you that we are here. We do care about your, our, our students, our community, and our jobs and responsibilities. But also, since big corporations are recognizing the job of their employees, giving them a compensation to be there supporting and putting their health at risk. Even though they followed all the procedures to protect the employees. I think it will be, our jobs will be recognized. It will receive some kind of compensation. And not only the district just to close and say, no, we, we, your jobs are the same and we are not going to give you any extra compensation. That's why I am here asking for the support of the board to, so we can receive the same compensation that all the teachers are receiving. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Anna, um, for your comment. And we did receive your letter. I think I saw the board members shaking their heads, yes, that they received the letter. So thank you for speaking tonight. And as you know, this is a collective bargaining issue. So certainly, uh, this will be taken back to negotiations. Okay, and so actually, the three minutes are up. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for speaking tonight. Okay, let's see. So on, I don't think we had any other oral communication. I think they're all on reopening. But if anybody thinks differently, raise your hand in the participants. I think they're all reopening comments. Yeah. So Sue Jorgensen, I didn't see a comment card from you. Did that just come in?
Yes, it did, President.
Okay, okay, just came in. All right, okay, go ahead. You can um, go ahead and move Sue up then.
It's on the classified MOU.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. That's not on the agenda tonight, so.
Okay.
Am I unmuted?
Yeah, go ahead, Sue. Welcome.
Yes, um, thank you. I'm glad that I'm following Anna. Um, she spoke so well about the issue with the MOU. I know it's a collective bargaining issue and there can be a lot of discussion about it. But I'd like to add just a little bit more information. Mainly from the equity issue, I have been very fortunate to sit on the Equity Committee and I've sat with some board members on that. And I see this as such a prime example where we're looking at two different units and we can delve deeper into what those units are comprised of mostly. And when I see something like this where we're, the classified are being given zero financial incentive, and I think the teachers have like three different types of stipends that they're available. We have been back on work at on sites since August. We weren't given a choice, many of us. We just had to show up. And when I see a classified instructional assistant in the classroom with a teacher and they're both working hard, when we see nurses doing the COVID tests, they're both working hard and they're getting different pay. Our maintenance and custodial got those schools ready to go. They worked hard to do that. And there is, there is just a huge discrepancy and I don't see how we can be publicly talking about equity when um, we look within our staff and see such a huge discrepancy. And um, I, not even really speaking for myself, my job hasn't changed all that much other than needing to hold books across campus. But I look at my colleagues and I see them exposed. And when the, we are offered two weeks of paid leave if we have to quarantine, I have to wonder, say, well, what, what would we do if we didn't tell you that we traveled or we weren't exposed? I, I just, I'm, it's not adding up. And I, I felt the need also to point that out. Um, thank you.
All right, um, thank you, Sue, for speaking. Again, this is a collective bargaining issue. I don't know, Dr. Baker, if you wanted to say anything?
I think uh, Ms. Kelly has been working with CSEA in collective bargaining, so I'll let her respond.
Yes, um, thank you very much, Sue and Anna, for speaking tonight um, on behalf of the classified members. This is a touchy subject because it is part of negotiations. And so although I would love to respond in full detail, it would be inappropriate to some degree because we are still having ongoing negotiations. However, I do want to point out that um, the, the work of classified and the work of teachers are different in the sense that classified in their contract are noted to be hourly employees. And uh, teachers are considered to be salaried employees. And the reason why that is significant in the contract is because there is an element in which classified members can put in for extra, a timesheet, extra pay. Whenever there is extra work that is being asked of them to do. Um, so there is that provision in there and I'm hoping that all CSEA members are reminded of that through their leadership teams to um, talk to their supervisor about that situation, should that be the case. Because I know there are specific classifications in which perhaps work duties have decreased in some areas, for example, not as many families on campus or the um, students physically there. However, other elements may have changed, such as increase of testing and food distributions, like we've done in a different way, so different type of work. So there is that element that I hope all classified members do take advantage of. It is there for this specific reason. Uh, but in regards to negotiations, I can't speak to those topics um, tonight, certainly. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that um, extra information. And I'll just mention also um, on this topic, we have gotten some emails about uh, whether the stipends are for hazard pay or not. And just to be clear, the stipends for teachers are not for hazard pay because I think that's a misunderstanding that's out in the community. So I just want to make sure that that's clear as well. All right, um, and this is not an agenda item, so we should move on because uh, really it's meant to be kind of quick um, comments to the board. And if it's a factual sort of thing, we can respond. But since it's not agendaized, we really can't have a conversation. Okay, so we're on to the next um, but again, Anna and Sue, I just want to say thank you very much for um, contacting us and letting us into the thoughts. And please do work through your union representation for the collective bargaining. All right, so our next agenda item is number nine, school and community reports. Um, we are going to hear from Clifford School tonight, uh, Ms. Toretto, Frito, sorry. Who's here to talk about seventh and eighth grade and the wonderful projects they've been doing. So welcome so much. I'll let you go ahead and introduce what we're going to see tonight.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Am I good?
Yes, you're good. Thank you. Welcome so much.
Thank you. Um, good evening, President McAvoy, board members, Dr. Baker, and community of Redwood City. Uh, my name is Michelle Torito and I am a seventh and eighth grade science teacher at Clifford School. Um, the first presentation that you are going to be seeing is of my seventh grade students who have been studying ecology and ecosystems for the past four to six weeks. And we have the opportunity to enter the Scholastic Bloom Science Contest, which um, we are still waiting to hear from to see if we have won. Um, you are seeing um, our entries of about 50% of my seventh grade students. And the contest was that they had to create a hybrid plant that solved a community problem such as pollution, water conservation, ozone destruction, or anything that they chose. And these are the entries that you see. Fabulous. So um, the next thing that we will be showing is we're going to be highlighting our eighth grade students. Um, the eighth grade students um, have been working on many standards. Um, some of the standards that we worked on this year were force in motion, energy transfer, um, simple machines. And so their final project was to take all of those concepts and mesh it into a Rube Goldberg machine. And so here are about eight of our students who created from home Rube Goldberg machines. I would like to give 100% credit to Maya Strathby for creating that amazing video. She is my eighth grade student at Clifford and she 100% put together that entire video. And I'm proud of every student that I have in Clifford Middle School. So congratulations to everybody who's watching.
So with the audience and Ms. Torito, you cannot see is all the panelists, so the board members and all the district staff, everybody was clapping and just in awe as we were watching this amazing presentation.
Just imagine, I saw 46 of those. So that was just, that was just eight of them. I had 46 of those videos and they've learned so much. I'm so proud of what they've done and all from home, all from home. It was amazing.
Future engineer and scientist of America right there, you know?
Yes.
Truly. Um, well, thank you very much to all the seventh and eighth graders. I know some of you were on the Zoom tonight, uh, you and your parents. So welcome and um, really amazing project. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, there's more clapping.
Yay.
That's great. All right, well, thank you so much. And just as a reminder to the audience, uh, we are showcasing student work at the beginning of every meeting. And so if you have any other ideas, please send me an email or send Dr. Baker an email and we will put you on the agenda for the year. All right, thank you. Okay, we are on to the bond update. Mr. Diaz, welcome.
How you guys doing?
Oh, and Mr. Robertson, welcome. Hello.
Hello, hello. Okay, I'm going to start my screen share. Are you guys able to see my screen? Yeah. Okay, great. So this is our bond program project progress tracking matrix. And as you can see, um, we're getting near the end of our bond program. Uh, everything that's grayed out has been completed. Everything with an X is in progress. And so I'm going to go through the projects that have not received DSA certification yet. Uh, Clifford Construction Star, or Construction will be completed soon, uh, early quarter two of 2021. Fair Oaks closeout is in process. Garfield estimated construction end quarter one of 2022. Orion Alternative, formerly John Gill, estimated construction end um, quarter four by the end of 2021. We received DSA certification letters for HODs and for Henry Ford. Hoover Gym and Modernization Project will be completed quarter two of 2021. So uh, we're coming up on completion of that project. I'll have some good photos for that one here in a second. Uh, the Kennedy Modernization closeouts in process. Roosevelt will be completed this month, um, quarter one, 2021. Roy Cloud as well. And Adelante Selby. And then Taft will be completed uh, by the end of the year, quarter four of 2021. Anyone have any questions on the high level status of each project? Okay, I'm going to jump into our bond program construction progress photo update. So this was the last photo we showed you of the Clifford Outdoor Learning Area. Completed photo.
We're still seeing the spreadsheet.
Right. Oh, okay. Give me just one second. There we go. Are you guys seeing the bond program construction progress photo update now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this was the photo of the Clifford Outdoor Learning Court that we showed you at our last update. These are the completed photos. Uh, we showed this, showed this photo update as well. This is the new ornamental fencing in front of Clifford School. And here's the new ADA compliant path of travel with new railing and the ornamental decorative fencing uh, with the laser cut panels. This was the last photo that we showed you of the front of the Garfield School, the new CD, new parking lot expansion and CDC area. Progress photos. And completion. Uh, this is a photo kind of from the other side of the CDC. You can see the new CDC play structure. And then an overhead shot that captures it all. This is the backside of Garfield School where the, where we're prepping for the new classroom building. Uh, Dawn pointed out that we uncovered, I believe, nine unknown septic tanks right here from 1926. That was pretty interesting. It capped off the old building. This was the last photo of the Hoover new gym that we showed. In the interior. This is current. nearing completion. Really exciting. And the interior now. And uh, Dawn sent me a photo today of uh, the first basketball hoop um, that was recently put up. So we're getting there. Uh, some path of travel upgrades at Hoover School. Uh, bringing, bringing us into ADA compliance. Additional path of travel. Orion Alternative School, these are the last photos that we showed you. See some progress photos. Significant amount of concrete poured recently. And you can see that we're now going vertical with steel. Also very exciting. And this is an overhead drone shot. You can see the, the two-story classroom building foundations kind of coming together and you can envision the new administration building and classroom buildings now. Moving on to Roosevelt, this is the landscape restoration where we had interim housing portables. The new completed lunch shelter with tables. And the new reconfigured entryway to the Roosevelt Administration Building. We'll show some final shots of the newly configured Administration Building interior at the, during the next update. We'll also have our professional final photos of the interior of the Selby Admin. Roy Cloud School, you can see the new paint, the new ornamental fencing. The new entry, one of the new entryways to the school. This is the backside of Roy Cloud. New ornamental fencing. And the safe, safer path of travel for the students that are walking. And the touchless flush valves. And faucets. Moving on to Taft, this was the last photo that we showed you guys. I'm a long way at Taft. These are some progress shots. Pouring the concrete foundation. Going vertical. And this is our most recent overhead drone shot. Do the amphitheater and the new classroom building, new administration are all really coming together. Also very exciting. And that's all we have for you guys today. Any questions?
All right, any questions?
Um, well, I just, I have one question I wanted to ask. You are showing the touchless faucet and toilet at Roy Cloud. I want to confirm those are going in at other sites also. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, most sites are complete. There are a couple that are just waiting on, you know, select specialty type flush valves or faucets in certain locations.
Okay, thank you. It's exciting to see how far these projects have come. I can't believe seeing that spreadsheet totally, almost completely grayed out is incredible. It's come a long way and it's really exciting to see all these photos. So, um, I did, I have one other comment, but I want to see if other board members had any questions first. Okay, if none, um, I was thinking this might be a good time to talk about fencing because there's been a lot of questions in the community about that. Um, why we have the fencing going in and how we got to that point, why we chose the fencing we did. And whether or not the public has access to the campuses on evenings and weekends. So Dr. Baker, I don't know if you wanted to address it or if you wanted me to or.
You can go ahead and start and then I can address the public having access during after school hours and the weekends.
So, um, sorry, I didn't catch everything you said.
Start and then we can, I can bring, talk about the public having access.
Okay, sure. And so the goal of the fencing was to funnel all of the everybody coming onto campus goes through the office and that is to keep our staff and our students safe. I think everybody understands that we're safer if everybody checks into the office and can't just walk on, walk on the campus from, um, you know, anywhere. Um, there are a lot of open spots on a lot of our campuses. Um, several offices that were in the center of the campus. When I was a new board member and I was visiting Kennedy, I walked around on campus for 10 minutes trying to find the office. Um, and I could have been anybody, you know, anybody just walk on looking for anything. Um, so with the Measure T bond that was passed in 2015, um, there had been a facilities master plan process back in, was it 2011?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, and that was extensive community input and outreach. Um, and everybody said the number one concern is safety. So we added the fencing. Dawn, what else? We've done security cameras.
Cameras, correct.
Um, and the fencing was chosen specifically. Dawn, do you know the parameters that were looked at?
Uh, we also, also the door locks.
Door locks because teachers had to go outside to lock their door. Um, and you know, in the, the age of school shootings, we want our teachers to be able to just close the door and have it locked. Um, but the parameters, I believe, were what six to eight feet fencing based on what the architects recommended. Um, that went to the bond committee. Um, they chose, I think, they looked at three and then made a recommendation to the board, I believe. And that happened so long ago.
Correct. There were three, there were three panels that were brought to the, to the bond committee and then on to the board. And then we chose the, the panels that you see there at either six or eight feet, depending on what the architect felt was needed at any particular site.
I've also heard concerns that we're locking people on the campus and there's no way off if there's an emergency. And I want to assure the community that that is not true. There are pushbars that people can, they can exit the campus at any time. It's just that anybody coming on has to come in through the office.
Correct. Well, we're, we're actually safer now than we were because before there used to be a chain in the padlock. And it would have to take the time to undo the padlock to get out. So now all they have to do is hit the panic bar on their app. On every gate except the vehicle gates.
Correct. And then finally, you know, we have had the campuses closed due to COVID. And that came at the recommendation of the Seminole County Health Department. I believe now that we've moved into the red tier, they are open again on evenings and weekends. Um, the public still has access to them and always will. That's always been important to the district and to the board. Um, so we still have, you know, the, um, the baseball and soccer from the city. We have, you know, the joint use agreement with the city also. Um, is there anything else, Dr. Baker?
No, the only thing that we were waiting on was for the new signage that we were going to get from the county health department. They still want you to make sure about the six feet distancing, about wearing a mask, but making sure if you're using any of the, um, like the play equipment that, you know, you take sanitizer and wash your hands right after using it. So I need to check with, with Martin to make sure and see if we receive that signage yet from them.
I think that was it. Alyssa, if there was anything else that I missed.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad that you talked about the fencing. Uh, we had seen a lot of chatter about it on Nextdoor. So I think it's important to address so people know sort of how we got to where we are and, and all of that. So, um, anyway, I do see in the chat, somebody's asking about at Garfield for the preschool. Maybe some concerns that children could escape campus. I don't know how hard it is to push that panic bar. I don't know, Dr. D, I mean, Mr. Diaz, if you want to say something about that.
I mean, it, it, if they have runners, I mean, it is a possibility. We, we do talk to all the teachers because that is a new situation that we have. Uh, and a requirement, there's no way around it. It is an egress issue required by the state of California. So, um, we just have to get used to that type of situation. And I really personally don't think that it's going to happen very often, if at all. So.
All right. Then one other question was, is there fencing up behind the Clifford playground at the rear of the school?
Um, the total perimeter of Clifford, including the back hillside is, is completed.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you very much for the bond update. It's so exciting. As Janet said, just to see all the completion. I know when we started, you know, it was one big blank sheet. And now it's getting all filled in. I'm wondering, can you send that, um, sheet? I don't, I don't think we need the photos, but if you could send a sheet.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right. Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. So do I have a motion to approve the bond program consent items?
So moved.
Maria. And Cecilia. Roll call vote, please.
Rusty Wells.
Aye.
Rusty Lawson.
Aye.
Rusty Monks.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz Sokum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right. And there's no pro bond program action. So thank you very much to our bond folks. Appreciate having you here. Lots of clapping again. All right, we're on to number 12, discussion items, COVID-19 and reopening update. Dr. Baker and team.
Yes, thank you so much. Before we begin, let me ask who has the, um, the slide down.
Kyle has it.
Oh, Kyle has it. Thank you. Thank you. Would you, would you start? I think we're going to start with Clifford School if I'm not mistaken. And I hope, I think Jude is, is here. So Jude can, if Jude can, uh, start, let's go on to the, uh, the next slide. All right. And Jude, I'm going to, Jude Noyes, the principal from Clifford, I'd like to introduce him. And if we can unmute the Zoom, if we can, if we could unmute, uh, him, it would be great.
Hi, can you hear me?
Ah, you're on.
I am, I'm here. Thank you. Um, I'm really honored to have this opportunity to speak about Clifford today. And I'd like to say good evening to school board members, Dr. Baker and the community and President McAvoy. Um, I'm honored to speak about Clifford and we have some really exciting things going on. And I will share a little bit about what we're doing. So, um, you know, everyone's really excited about students returning to campus, teachers and families and, and administration and all staff are really excited about seeing kids very soon. Um, and we're busy making our schedules that will be sent to families. We're just gathering data from our surveys. And I would like to thank Clifford parents and families for completing the survey for us and um, being patient with us on all the surveys that you've been getting. But it really helps us, you know, make plans to servants, to serve our students and community. Um, so we're working really hard. Our teachers are busy. Um, you know, planning together and as soon as we have schedules out, then we will share them with the community. And next I'd like to go to the next slide, Kyle. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the students that are on our campus right now and have been some of them since November. Um, we have our pilot classrooms here pictured and there's just a, that we have some special day classes. We have our kindergarten through second grade classroom and Mr. Chun Hun. Um, he simultaneously streams teaching while we're teaching students on campus. Um, and then we have a fourth grade teacher, Ms. Cody, who's also simultaneously teaching students live and online. And she's been here since November as well. And we have our third through fifth grade SDC teacher, Ms. Reisler's class, who's been here since January and she is teaching her students on campus. And another picture of Ms. Cody's class lined up on the lines that have been painted on the, on the ground where students stand six feet apart. And then we have our sixth through eighth grade SDC classroom, Mr. Candelaria, uh, whose students are also streaming and in person. Um, so what we have here is a fantastic set of educators as well as teachers teaching online who have come into the school early and are working with students in person. Um, and every protocol is followed. The students are safe. Teachers are really get the kids trained to follow all the safety protocols. Students are happy. Um, they're working hard. Um, it's just a lot of joyful learning and engagement. And we're just so proud to be able to offer these programs to our students. Okay, Kyle, next slide. And here's our hub classrooms and we have two different kinds of hubs. We have a hub that's funded by our district. Um, for the fifth through eighth grade hub, it's a district hired. Um, uh, cub leader is what we call them. And then we also have um, our own hub that we've funded through site funds and our fabulous PTO also supports in financially supporting this hub with our K2 students and they are working with PE plus coaches. Um, it is just a joy to see little kindergartners coming to class. And, and when they did start in January, um, it kind of took me back to say these kiddos have never been on campus. Um, they are kindergartners, they're little and it was their first day. Um, and so that really touched my heart to be able to see them come back. Um, but with the support of our district and facilities and, and the efforts of everyone in, in the district leadership to, to make all of this happen is just remarkable. Um, the support, the leadership, the organization, um, everything that you see in these pictures happening, the spacing, the, the staff. All of that is with the support of our families and our district. And we've really seen increased engagement. Hire, you know, students getting, you know, better grades in middle school because they're participating and completing assignments. The social emotional opportunities that they're getting by connecting to adults that they trust. Um, having connections with other peers has been a phenomenal opportunity. And I want to say thank you to district leadership for supporting us in this effort. Kyle, next slide, please. So we, we'd like to share and a parent who has, who's a lovely parent in our community who has a student in every model on our site. Um, she has, she has actually a student in SDC pilot. She has a student in the general ed fourth grade pilot. And then she also has a student in our district hub. And so I thought, who would be better person than someone who has all of her children in all, all the classrooms? So I'd like to have her speak and then also a student's experience being in the K2 hub. Go ahead, Kyle.
That's great. Why do you like it more? To get to come to school. And she's right down there, huh? That's great, buddy. Thank you Hudson.
Hello, my name is Tracy Pitter and we have three elementary aged children at Clifford Elementary School. We have a fifth grader who is in a hub. We have a fourth grader in a pilot hub. And we also have a second grader in a special day class. We thought long and hard before allowing our children to attend in-person learning because we were concerned at the COVID pandemic and the effects it could have on particularly our youngest who has no immunity and is registered disabled. And our family as a whole. We decided that the in-person learning would have a greater positive experience for our children than them staying at home battling online. Since we made that decision and they've been back in school, it's been amazing. Their determination to keep on working at school, their enthusiasm to get up and be able to go to school. Their excitement to be amongst other children has been phenomenal. The biggest thing that we are really grateful for is Clifford has gone far and beyond to make our children safe and healthy. Although there has been areas where the pandemic has been in the school. So people have tested positive. Not once has any of my children come home and had COVID. The social distancing, the protocols that are in place with testing every two weeks. With the children being six feet apart, my children were in. with the children being six feet apart, my children wearing masks and sanitized. I am fully confident and safe that my children can be in person, learning, staying safe, playing socially, distanced, and having the education that we all signed up for. I just want to personally thank Ms. Tiffany Parish and Jude Noise for making it happen and for keeping our children safe and well. Thank you.
So before we move on to the next slide, I just, I just would like to say thank you to John, Dr. Baker, Wendy, Liz, Linda, Erin, everyone at the district, really shepherding us through the most difficult times, I think, in our careers. Mine particularly personally, but I'd like to say that, that the district has worked so strategically and so supportively with administration, with staff through all of this and without, without the efforts of our leadership at the district level and around the sites and in our schools. We wouldn't be able to be as successful as we are and in a place where we're at right now. So I'd just like to thank the board, the district leadership for their support. Next slide. So I'd also like to talk a little bit about our NUA practices that we're, we're working on at Clifford and I think throughout our district as well. But particularly to focus on some shining practices that we have at Clifford. Even through, you know, distance learning and all the challenges that our teachers are having to face with, you know, adjusting to a different instructional model. We have a set of teachers at Clifford who've decided to join in the NUA and, and really have taken leadership role in engaging in equitable educational practices and have really just gone above and beyond in working with NUA. And we're just so proud to continue being able to working, to be able to work with NUA. And I'd like to thank Dr. Baker and Linda Montez and the board and for allowing us to continue this great work. So I'd like, I'd ask the teacher if she would be willing to share a little bit about her practices and how it's impacting students in a positive way. And she's here tonight, Stephanie Eaton.
Great, Kyle, let me unmute her.
So. Okay, thank you. So I just, I actually want to give credit to these two pictures are belong to Ms. Cody's pilot class and I'll kind of be talking about those a little bit. Good evening, Dr. Baker, Cabinet and Board. I'm Stephanie Eaton and my four or five teammates, Kristana Capel-Curtis, Katrina Zach, Shannon Cody, and I would like to thank our site coach, Katie McClure, our site administrators, Jude and Tiffany, Dr. Montez, and all of you for allowing us to continue to work with Robert Price on developing our understanding and implementation of the NUA philosophies and strategies. We see so much value in the strategies and find them to be very effective in helping students process and comprehend information, both in the online and in-person learning models. We are using the strategies across many subjects, reading, writing, science, social studies, and look forward to learning more about how to implement them in math. We like that we're able to use the strategies with the current curriculum to help students better understand text and concepts. I find NUA exciting because we are able to guide the journey. I believe in the foundational beliefs that intelligence is modifiable. As a teacher, making the connections with your students and getting to know them helps with this mediation. Two, all students benefit from focus on high intellectual performances. I honestly, in the beginning, I had the opinion that this was more for middle school students and boy, was I wrong. Three, culture, cognition, language, they all play together. Culture is not always relevant to race. It is what is meaningful and relevant to each of us. In addition to appreciating the strategies, we appreciate the philosophy and helping all students see the value in their learning and themselves as learners. It's fun to learn more about ways to engage students in developing their own metacognitive skills and appreciate their own learning strengths. We're very grateful to have this opportunity to work with Robert Price. He is actually our new teammate in the NUA. As a team, we are getting a lot out of watching him model lessons and we can't thank you enough, Board. Working with him on the processing and implementing in our classes, he is a fantastic teacher. We are grateful for your support and allowing us to develop our own practices in a way that is meaningful to us and fits our schedules in this trying year. So again, these two pictures, I just want to talk about a little bit, some of the thinking maps. We are pretty, we, we're in love with the, the thinking maps and this, the circle maps and the bridging maps. And we're getting into the moving from the processing and, and the retaining the information. And so that's where Robert is really guiding us. And today we had a meeting, our meeting with him today. We really enjoy speaking with him. And please cut me off when my time is up. Also, I just, I, two quick things. I, I asked Ms. Mrs. Zach and Ms. Curtis to give me a little bit of input about why they're excited about NUA. And Mrs. Zach said, there are two things I find exciting about NUA. The first is allowing the students to lead the lesson whereby they do more of the talking and I am able to guide them. Additionally, I'm able to see concrete representations of how they are learning, thinking and organizing the material concept we are studying. The second part I find exciting as well is watching and listening to my colleagues along with Robert, utilizing the strategies with the students. Each one is able to personalize it to their teaching style and adapt the lesson to the level of their particular students. I always learn so much observing my colleagues. It gives me great appreciation and gratitude for the talent that we are surrounded by at Clifford. And I just really appreciate you allowing us the time to discuss how much we love being a part of this program.
Thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate that. That was lovely. And, and I really enjoyed watching you grow as an instructor, as a teacher and as a teacher leader through this practice, all of you. It's just been inspiring and admirable, especially during such a difficult, difficult year to adjust to. So I appreciate that. And I'm thankful that you're committed to this work for our students. Kyle, if you could go back and just do a quick scan through some of the pictures that Stephanie shared with me to share with you all and then we'll be done. It's a link right under the NUA strategies. There you go. So fourth and fifth grade, just wanted to share some of the strategies that they're using in their classrooms. Let's quickly go through those. So some, some of more of the thinking maps, the bridge map. This is just an example of how students are using these strategies. We could just go through these. I just wanted to show you different examples. Another bridge map frame of, frame of reference for nonfiction text. This is the different way they process information. And then a circle map with fiction text more for processing. And then circle map and building schema. We saw a picture of this already. And then there's one more. Is that it? Okay. So thank you very much to everyone and to my teachers who are just amazing and surprise me and impress me every day. And really they make Clifford great. And so for, I feel blessed in this position to be able to lead such great teachers and be able to work with such brilliant and supportive district staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And I think tonight we're just hearing from Clifford School. And for those in the audience who don't attend every board meeting, like some of us do, we've heard from a number of the schools now on some of the programs that they're working on this year, as well as kind of thinking about moving into more reopening for students. And I did want to say on the National Urban Alliance work, that's what that stands for, NUA. I believe we're going to be discussing, we've discussed it at past board meetings, but we'll also be discussing it, I think, next week, right? From six to seven. Is that correct, Dr. Baker?
Is it next week? We
Or not next week, I mean, two weeks, sorry, before our March 24th board meeting.
Right, right.
Right. So if anybody wants to learn more, please join us from six to seven PM for us, kind of a study discussion item on equity and our National Urban Alliance work and all of that. And thank you so much, Ms. Eaton and Mr., actually Jude Noise, Mr. Noise.
Right.
I really appreciate hearing from you. Did any of the board members have questions about Clifford or comments before we move on to? I know we have more on reopening. All right. I saw a lot of smiles and nods and I know we're very appreciative of all the work going on.
Thank you, Jude, and thank your staff. You've done an amazing job this year during this pandemic and this manner of instruction that is going on. So thank you and your team at Clifford School. Outstanding.
Thank you, Board, Dr. Baker.
Can I just say, I also would like to thank the PTA group for funding the hubs and making sure that the students are there on site, making that possible. And, you know, of course, to the teachers and everyone that made it possible for the students to be there onsite learning. I'm really happy to see that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's an important point on the learning hubs. We have heard from a number of parents and students that those have been lifesavers for them, really important part of their children getting education and then being able to go to work and all of that. So really thanks for all the learning hubs. They've been such a great addition to our program this year.
Okay, so let's start with updates about reopening. It's amazing that a year ago, almost a year ago, we went into sheltered place and to what was called at that time, you know, distance learning, but it was like emergency, you know, getting home and then our teachers trying to definitely learn the different platforms that we were practically getting into place. So and a year later, we're going to open up more classrooms. So let's begin. And Kyle, the next slide, please. So a bit on the employee vaccine. At this point in time, you know that we had in San Mateo County, when the 23 superintendents in the district, school districts in the county developed a plan and a listing for prioritizing our educators and our assistants and classified employees to become vaccinated. There were three groups, actually four groups that were created. A group one A, a one B, a group two, and a group three. As of March 4th, all of the employees that have been offered, have been offered access to a vaccine through San Mateo County. Either at the event center, Kaiser also opened up appointments. And then there were appointments that were opened up through the FEMA event that is happening at the Open Coliseum where each of the counties of Office of Education were given codes for our teachers to go there also to get our, not only teachers, but classified employees and our district office staff to get their back, their first vaccine. And some now have had their second vaccine. So that's where we are with the vaccine at this point in time. At yesterday's superintendent's meeting, Superintendent McGee said, any new staff coming on board to any of our school districts, we just need to make sure that we update our list and they will make sure that they get on a priority at one of the locations to give the vaccine. So that's where we, that's where we are with vaccines at this point in time. So we've come quite a ways from about three weeks ago when we started this process. So I'm very grateful and thankful to the County Office of Education and to the San Mateo County Public Health Department as we all are. Next slide, please.
And Dr. Baker, just a quick on the vaccines. We also were able to help our after-school providers and partners, right?
They were
The Boys and Girls Club and the Reach and everybody, yeah.
Yeah, they were all placed on the list. Everybody was placed on the list. Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So we're planning to reopen and expand for the 21, 22 school years. So let's get started with this. I know there has been a lot of conversation at school sites. There have been several school sites that have held parent information meetings. There have been school site councils and PTOs and PTAs involved. So with that being said, let's start with the next slide. So Wendy, if you would like to start, please.
Yes. So at the last board meeting on February 24th, the board gave us, me a charge to go and work with our unions to firm the new MOU, Memorandum of Understanding. Certainly with our teachers' union, we are in consistent communication and negotiations with CSCA, our Classified Union Group. So actually, we got started that week on Friday after the board meeting and continued forth until it was signed on March 4th, which was of course, just last week. So I appreciate the efforts of RCTA. There were three meetings involved in coming to consensus and signing the MOU late into the evening on Thursday night. But it does address, of course, health and safety, which is the main priority and has been a priority for the district as we've discussed and was in our previous MOUs all throughout the year. The cleanliness factors and how our district will be managing that, the cleaning schedules and so forth. And moving into this, this spring time period that administrators would be creating schedules to meet the needs of our enrollment demands. And so as Dr. Baker will be speaking about, these surveys are continuing so that we can have these schedules created for families and for teachers and staff to know what our next step is. So within that MOU, you know, there was a lot of discussion, but I'm pleased that we were able to have that completed by our deadline the board gave of this board meeting. So that was nice so that we could plan forward. And then, of course, in the meantime, we had Governor Newsom's announcements as well. So it was very timely. Thank you, John.
Definitely was. Thank you. So we have been meeting with the principals on a regular basis, especially as the MOU was being created and RCTA was meeting with district staff to create the MOU. And during those meetings, each of the school site administrators, along with the assistant principals that many of them do have, started working on a survey that they wanted to send out to their community to determine who definitely would be coming back and who definitely still wanted distance learning. Their deadline was to get these out at the end of the workday on Friday. It was difficult at times because some of the site administrators wanted to have informational meetings with their communities and then others were still working on a Q and A that they would have ready on Saturday. So it was, the timing was either on March 5th or the 6th and they all went out. Needless to say, I have received comments from parents in regard to the surveys that they should have been tweaked in a fashion. So in regard to AMPM. And just so that the community knows, these surveys, the information and the schedules that are worked on regarding the surveys are going to be shared with myself and Liz Wolf. And we're going to meet with each administrator to look at those schedules and to determine, you know, the needs that they may still have. For example, I know there are still a lot of questions out there in regard to childcare, in regard to, you know, before school, after school, especially when you're having a model that comes into a model in the morning and then a model in the afternoon. a model that comes into a model in the morning and then a model in the afternoon. So those are the things that I will work very closely with some of our partners to see how they can further assist us with the needs that parents may have regarding this. For example, we have at Clifford, and I believe at Cloud, we have Neighborhood Kids Corner, if I'm not mistaken. And then we also have PCC that works with some of our schools. We have the Boys and Girls Club, we have the Rec Department, and then we also have the Y. So I want to see how we can, you know, work together to make this work, especially for our parents who are working, are going to work, and then maybe their child is in a PM session. And then what happens, you know, in the AM session, if there's care for them at that time? So I really need to look at the schedules from each school and then determine what partners each school is working with. I know I will be contacting PCC and I'll, I'll meet with Victor and Anthony to see how much more support that they can give us during this time. So the schedules, we are working on them the week of March fifteenth. But let me tell you, we've already started. Liz and I have appointments starting tomorrow at eight o'clock. We work on, starting Friday, we have all schools, Thursday and Friday, with the exception of one on Monday. So they're back to back and so that I can get this information so that I can also, if I need to work with one of these outside partners regarding childcare, I can bring them in and to the loop. And then the week of March twenty-second through April sixth, we're going to have initial modified schedules where definitely we want to have our preschool through eighth grade students back in person based on, you know, the parent surveys. But also, you know, it's not coming back to do, as I've heard from one parent, I about, we're just going to come back and we're starting, going to start assessing the kids right away to see where they are and then start moving forward. No, that's not going to happen. We want to make sure that they have not been in school almost a year now, for those who have not returned. We want to make sure that they're get better acquainted with coming back, enjoying coming back to school, sharing with their peers, meeting their peers, having recess with their peers, all of that. It's, it's not just going to be, you know, any type of instruction, instructive instruction. We want some social emotional learning taking place. So for those parents who are concerned about that, that's not what this is about, to come in and get your child assessed so that they can move forward. We definitely want to take time to, for the kids to get to know one another, to know their teachers, to know the campus. And especially when, you know, the rules now, the rules of wearing your mask all the time, the rules of taking, there's going to be timeouts for you to go out and take off your mask and have, you know, a rest period without it. And the rules of where you have to line up now according to the distancing and then the play areas and all of that. So we, that's what we want to do during this time. And then on April eighth, our full schedules, our full schedules are in place so that we can start seeing our students back in. It's not, I'm not going to say a normal classroom because it's not. Get them put back into the classroom for instruction beginning on the eighth. Next slide, please. So the health and safety on campus, we still need to definitely follow these four pillars. Regarding health and hygiene, face covering, physical distancing, and limiting gatherings. That means with the limiting gatherings also, at the superintendent's meeting yesterday, one of the questions that I posed was definitely about the physical distancing. I would like it to be reduced, the research that you read, the information coming from pediatricians, what the science is saying, you do not need the six feet. There are some countries that it is like one foot or it is no, there's no social distancing, it's just like it was originally. So in our conversations with all the students yesterday, the twenty-three of us, including Superintendent McGee from the County Office of Ed, told us, she understands what we're saying, what the California Department of Public Health guidelines say. But what San Mateo County Health guidelines say for us are six feet. So that's what we need to adhere to until that is changed. And I know, Elisa, you're going to be going to a meeting, I think, maybe tomorrow, I think, with all the county elected people. And I know this is going to probably be brought up because we as superintendents, myself being one, was very concerned about this because I would like to have it lessened so that I can bring more kids back. So, but we, at this point in time, we're still at six feet. There is a daily student wellness survey that needs to be completed. There is a student health contract addendum to be signed. And we're hoping that parents will take this opportunity to allow us every other week, every other week to do a curative test. That will give us information, you know, if there has been, you know, if there has any contact of becoming positive with COVID. But also, it's one of our safety protocols. And it's an item that the governor is very much in tune to and really wants schools to abide by and to do. I am hoping that as we progress and get more students back into the schools that I can, and I know Wendy and her staff and Antonio Perez, who is the Director of Student Services, I would like to move in the direction of the antigen test, where we get the results within, you know, ten to fifteen minutes. Right now, we're doing that pilot at two sites. But in talking with the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative today, they are willing to see if they can't give that for us for other sites in the school district. So the testing and the tracking and the tracing system will be in place as it has been since we started with students and teachers and classified staff back on our campuses. Next slide, please. So again, here is a graphic of the health checks, the, the checks of the temperature, the wellness surveys, a waiting area if we deem that a child is sick, and then the regular scheduled testing for our employees and also for our students who parents allow us to test. And then, of course, the PPE. I was at a, we had the superintendent's advisory council on Monday, and I had two board members that attended with myself there. And one of our kindergarten teachers, Weser Hart, said, I have got the PPE, so much PPE. I know what to do if I need it, I, I have so much. But just to reinforce, we have everything we need at our school sites. If it is not there, the office staff will let maintenance, maintenance and operations know right away and it will get delivered, but we have everything in place. Next slide. Facilities, and, and again, here's a six feet piece, and I don't want to dwell on it anymore as I did previously. I'm hoping that it will be reduced, but that's not within my authority to do or the board's authority either. But we do have the HBAC upgraded to MRF thirteen filtration. And what I want to let you know is that all of our HBAC systems have been upgraded to those MRF thirteens, which improve indoor air quality. And then I want you also to know that there is a air purifier in each of the classrooms. All of our bathrooms have exhaust fans. All populated classrooms, including pre-K classrooms and all offices, have a new purification system. An air purifier removes contaminants from the air and a room to improve the air quality. All, I can set that all in place. We are manually operating the DCV controls, demand control ventilation, that's what it stands for, which is controlled by the energy management system. Overwriting it opens the dampers to allow more fresh outside air. And we are running the HBAC system at a max before and after school hours. This allows more outside air into the classroom by opening up the HBAC damper at a hundred percent. And classrooms are cleaned at the end of the day. Restrooms are checked three times during the day and cleaned in the evenings by the night custodians. A checklist is in classrooms and restrooms, help staff keep track of the different tasks. So facilities has done a great job of being on top of this and making sure that we are protecting not only our students, our teachers, our staff. Next slide. Counseling supports the spring. So counseling has been available to all Redwood City schools. We've been fortunate that it's always been available in the last year for any student at all of our twelve schools. There's always been a system in place, anyone can request counseling for a student. School-based counselors are to return the students. And currently, we're planning the logistics of what that will look like. I want to thank Sequoia Healthcare District and Andrea Garen, who is our Wellness Director, that in a couple of weeks, we're going to be rolling out what is called Counseling Outside of School, also available, is called Care Solus. It's kind of a concierge service. I've been told it's, it's a new service for all students, their families and staff. Again, it's sponsored by Sequoia Healthcare District. You call the service and they will guide you to services to meet your needs. And we're hoping to roll this out within the next couple of weeks. And Andrea Garen will do an in-service for our, for our principals, who in turn can definitely do more communication with our parents and also with our teachers and our staff. So we'll put something out in written form. So this is definitely something that we're looking forward to. On top of the counseling by Star Vista, on top of the counseling by One Life, and then there are individual counselors that are at some of our school sites. Next slide, Kyle. So this is something that we need to remind people of. So I know Wendy is putting something out to our employees, and I would like her to review this, please.
Yes, thank you, John. So as it stands right now, I know spring break is around the corner and some people may be very anxious to travel and have a different type of scenery than we've had in the past year or so. However, at this moment in time, and things change a lot, but at this moment in time, the San Mateo County guidelines does still have a travel advisory in effect. And so this graphic here on the left does remind folks about what really needs to, what you really need to pay attention to. So the critical piece is that there is still no non-essential travel. So a fun trip anywhere outside one hundred and twenty miles of your home, really the Bay Area, will require self-quarantining in certain situations. And so it's a reminder to our staff, we did put information out in our newsletter today to staff. And we'll watch this closely. If we get an update and there's a change, then we'll make sure and update our staff certainly and make sure that it is out in the newsletter as well to families. But at this point in time, this is really critical because, as you all know from this presentation, we are excited to see our students back in late March and April. And we, we don't want the quarantining to get in the way of that, a great opportunity to be back with teachers. So, so please keep that in mind when you're thinking ahead over spring break, which is the week of March twenty-ninth. And we are excited to see people back in, in April.
All right, great, thank you, Wendy.
Can I ask, just since this slide is up, because we do have a comment in the chat about this, and it's probably important for the audience to know. So basically, it says, if families travel outside of a hundred and twenty miles area, are they unable to come back after spring break? Are we going to be asking families about that? And should they then keep their student home for two weeks if they plan on traveling outside of a hundred and twenty miles? I'm just wondering what our rules are.
That's a very good question. And, and we are going to put information out to the community and the communiquee that if they so desire, we've been hearing that some families, even some staff, may be traveling. And so if that wellness survey that, you know, it needs to be completed, and we should check to make sure, especially for this first one coming down. If you have traveled, you know, during this time period outside of a hundred and twenty miles in the Bay Area, you should check it, yes, and then you should keep your child at home, yes, you should. It's not that they're going to lose their place of what they've already decided to, to do, but they should keep them at home for that ten days, it's ten days, or two weeks, you know, two, two schools.
All right, so we can put out clarifying information as it gets closer. And as we've learned, every day, guidelines can change. So that's the guidelines today, however, it could change before spring break. Okay, but we'll, you can put that in your superintendent weekly letter or whatever goes out from the school site, right? Just so it's clear, because I know there will be a lot of questions from staff and from families.
We'll do, perfect.
Okay, thank, thank you.
All right, and I believe then we start our discussion next, if I believe that's the next slide. Oh, there's one more looking, that's right, we're looking at August. And, and this is going to be, next slide, Kyle, before I start. So looking ahead to August, as of right now, and Elisa just said it, guidelines change every day. But as of right now, we are planning to return, you know, in, in, in the next few weeks. But we're also planning at the same time to start ramp, ramping up for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Right now, because, and I'm speaking just right now, because of the guideline of the six feet distancing, if we still remain with that and it doesn't change, but I'm very hopeful that it will, we would have to have definitely, are you returning to instruction in person in August? Or is it going, are you going to enroll in a Redwood School, Redwood City School District, district-wide, English-only virtual academy in August? So that means if we have to have, if we cannot have all our bodies in one classroom and we still have to have two sessions, and that a morning and a PM. Okay, we can do that, but at the same time, we're not going to be doing both in person and then in the morning and then in the afternoon, do distance learning. No, we're going to have a, a, a virtual academy. We know some parents do not want to send their kids back for whatever reason. It depends on the number that are not sending them back if we have this virtual academy that starts in the fall of twenty twenty-one. So this survey, and I'm hoping that, I know we want to send it out at this point in time, but I'm thinking that maybe a little later, because maybe the guidelines will change for us about the feet. And maybe by that time, we will know how many parents will definitely come back in person. You know, even if we can get more children in a classroom with less, with, with the less social distancing that we need to do. So this is for information for us to plan, because within planning, we have to determine what teachers we have to hire, what classified staff we have to hire, and that all depends on our enrollment that's coming through the door. So I know we put April tenth on here, but I think that I will be talking to Wendy and Liz about that date. And depending on what, Elisa, you find out tomorrow, if there is anything different on that social distancing, would be very interesting. I don't think, according I don't think, according to what we heard in the superintendent's meeting, that I'm going to know by April 10th. I think I may know by the end of April, first part of May, but I'm not thinking this date. But if you could kind of pinpoint Superintendent McKee on a timeframe would be great, coming from a board member as opposed to me from superintendent. That'd be wonderful, because this information is very crucial for us for planning and hiring new staff.
Yeah, and we have been talking to her and I did send her another email. And so we'll get some clarification tomorrow and hopefully some information on timing at least. So, thank you. And I do know there were some parents, and I think some of them are in the audience, who wanted to start sending advocacy letters around this. So let's wait. I mean, you're obviously welcome to send an advocacy letter if you'd like on the social distance. But I think they know that we're interested and I know they're looking at guidelines and trying to figure out how they can help us. So hopefully we'll have some good news on this.
All right. Kyle, next slide, and I think the next slide is a discussion slide. No, it's not, I keep forgetting, I don't have my deck up so I can see it. So this is about 21-22 school year instructional program. The in-person model is definitely the bilingual program. Those are some, that program exists at some of our school sites. The English-only instruction, the Mandarin and Spanish immersion is all in person if we have to go in this direction next year. The full distance learning virtual academy is an English-only instruction district-wide program. It's just to make it very clear. Now the next slide. Now's the discussion. So go ahead, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, go ahead.
The, one of the informational pieces I know that you're missing at this point in time is the schedules for each school. And the reason why we don't have that right now is because as the MOU was created and officially signed off on Thursday evening, that led us to Friday to start working on the surveys at the individual school sites and to get responses back this week. We will start working, as I said previously, on those schedules so that we can get them back out to the community, so the community can see them. So I know the principals are also, at this point in time, working with their teachers on the schedules just so that we can have a really good sense of the numbers that are coming in to in-person learning, the hybrid model that the school will have. And then we can get that out to the community right away to get some feedback. And so there is nothing to show you tonight as far as the schedule for any school right now.
And Dr. Baker, was that schedule, are you talking about for what's happening the next couple of weeks or for next year? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not worried about, I know I have to worry about here sooner than later.
You're just talking about for the next couple of weeks, yeah. All right, so let's see, there are a few chat questions in the chat box. And then also I do have some comment cards. Should we take the comment cards first or do board members have any clarifying questions or comments? Do you have a preference? I think I saw some nodding of heads to go ahead and take the comment cards. And then maybe some of those comments might be reflective of what's in the chat as well. And then we can take a look at the chat and then we can also have board make comments or have any questions that we have. All right, so let's see, I've got, and just so you know, because I do get some questions like what order do you take the comments? I take them in the order of the timestamp when they arrive, so that's how we go. And so I was wondering, I was a little confused on the Google spreadsheet, it does always populate perfectly. Heidi Wallace, did you want to speak again or is this from last meeting? I think it might be from last meeting, but it popped up in this particular Google spreadsheet. So Heidi, if you're here and you'd like to speak, please raise your hand.
I muted her already.
Okay. Heidi, did you want to speak tonight or was this a leftover from last week or two weeks ago?
That was the speaker card from last time, but thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so we'll go on to the next speaker who is Pam Barish.
Hi all, can you hear me?
We can, thank you and welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you yet again for giving me the opportunity to speak. For those of you in the audience who do not know me, my name is Pam Barish, Mrs. B., and I am a kindergarten teacher at Henry Ford. For the past 30 years, I have taught nothing but kindergarten. It is my passion and my superpower. This past year has challenged me way beyond my wildest expectations, but I have fought hard to conquer the difficulties and learned a lot along the way. Happy kids, happy parents, happy Mrs. B., it's the trifecta of kindergarten success. Happily, we are coming to the end of the tunnel. I for one hate tunnels and cannot go through them without all the windows open and the radio blaring, unless I am the passenger, in which case my eyes are firmly shut. But I think we can all say that vaccines are here, we are returning to school soon and there's even a bit of normal, a new normal in the world where we are living. I, like everyone else, am dying to get away and have a change of scenery. My husband and I made plans to manage and escape and do just that safely over spring break before I knew of the return to school. I had an in-depth conversation with Human Resources on Monday and understand that unless Cal OSHA changes their expectations to match federal guidelines and neighboring counties' travel advisories, I will have to quarantine for 10 days upon my return, even though I will have had both of my vaccines as of tomorrow at 4:00 PM. My question to all of you is, will the same expectations of quarantine be required for our students and their families upon return from spring break travel? I cannot be the only one in San Mateo County trying to get away over spring break. I am being asked to protect those around me if I, when I return and can only hope that families who travel will be asked to do the same as we are now returning to school in person only three days after spring break. Was this considered to keep us safe as we are trying to do for them? While no children in R C S D have contracted COVID at school, in-person learning has been disrupted throughout the winter months due to COVID. I personally am going to be really aggravated to finally be coming back and there be a possibility that due to spring break travel, I might find myself in distance again before I even get going and I am being asked to quarantine. Just a thought to ponder or to reassure me if it has been pondered already. Thank you for your time. And I realized that Wendy kind of took the thunder out of my statement because she answered some of the questions, but it does bring up some concerns.
All right, thank you, Pam. And I, you know, we can also, as school board members, we meet with the county health folks. And so we'll try to get some clarity on all of this as well, if there's any additional clarity we can get. But thank you for your comments. And I'm struggling with sharing my screen and the timer, so sorry about that. I haven't quite figured out how to just share the timer and not my whole screen. Okay. So we are getting it anyway, we'll have to get some clarity on staff because there is some comments in the chat about all of this. So we'll definitely circle back with everybody before spring break. Okay, let's see, our next speaker is Indra Hernandez.
Oh, hi Alicia, hi everybody in the board. Hi, Mr. Baker and everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity you're giving me to speak up tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the CDC, the preschool. We are have some confusion on some instructions that we've been getting. This morning, we got an instruction of having an overlook back-to-school meeting with all the parents at the same time. And we've been said that Mr. Baker wanted that way. We have a concern for that because I just heard him saying that there's six distance apart and no gatherings. So if we have all the families together at the same time, doesn't make sense. So we want to be clear on that. And I have another thing is with all the wellness survey, is that applied for the staff, all the staff? Because I have heard that some of the staff members have been doing the wellness survey every day. They thought that it was just like signing in to get paid. But that's not the case, it's a wellness survey. And I want to be sure that all the protocols for the COVID are the same for everybody. Because I hear some pieces and not pieces and some are called, some are not called. So I want to be sure that everything, everybody is doing the same. So as when we say that Wednesdays are not to be in the classrooms and then some people are there in the classrooms because the administration let them be there. So I want to be sure that everything applies for everybody. You know, we are halfway of the vaccine. So we're not going to be able to have the second part of the vaccine when we want to come back. So I don't know if we can wait a little bit more, so everybody, we are all with the vaccine full, so we are protected. And I want to be sure that the children are, I don't know if they're going to be tested before they come into our preschool classrooms. Because in my, especially in my class, I have had four families that they have had the COVID. So I want to be sure that for the good of all of us, for them to be tested before they come into the classroom. We have been doing the best to teach them in a whole year. It's been a whole year totally different from other years of teaching. This experience has been on and off, we have learned a lot, the children have learned. If it's the time for them to come back in the classroom, we want to do the best, but we want to be safe as well. And thank you so much for everything. And we want to reassure the parents that we have been doing our best, virtual or in-person as we have always been doing. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much for all that you do, first of all, and then thanks for your comment. I don't know if there's any comments to say, Dr. Baker, or your follow-up or?
Wendy works very closely with the MOU in regard to the Wednesday. Wendy works very closely again with the wellness survey because it's part of Human Resources. So do you want to follow up with those concerns and questions that you have?
I think it'd probably be best if I spoke with Indra and, because sometimes it becomes very specific in terms of the questions. But yes, I'd be more than happy to help us through this process for sure.
Great, thank you. All right, our next speaker is Stephanie Chen.
President McIlroy, I have to record a panelist.
Okay, that's fine. Hi Stephanie, welcome.
Hi, I just wanted to ask a question. I'm so thankful for the plans for the fall. That's awesome, I'm so glad that there's going to be an option for us to go back fully in-person, really happy to hear about that. My question is, is that there seems to be a lot of discrepancy and disparate plans on each school site. And I was wondering if we could just have, like, you know, all K-5 schools will go back like this and all K-8 schools will go back, you know, in the similar format. Because I think that, you know, for equity concerns, you know, we should all be going back at this, like, in a similar manner.
You're talking about the fall, well, for equity concerns are different at each community. So as we're coming back right now, and when you're speaking about equity, there are some of our families that, no matter how we are, they feel for their needs to be met, they have to stay at home. And that's an equity piece right there. And as I was reminded of on Monday evening from one of our parents, she has a immune system and she went on to this long conversation about why she hesitated about sending her child back. I can't stay because you're at this grade level, you're going to come back. So you're speaking of the fall?
I'm speaking about now, actually. I mean, I think for the fall, we'll leave that, like, you know, hopefully we'll be all back five days a week. And then I love the idea of the virtual academy so that, you know, the people who want to take that option, you know, can choose that. But for right now, I feel like, you know, we should have some kind of, you know, similar formats for everybody to go back at, you know, some schools are going to go back this way, some schools are going to go back that way, you know. Can we not have some uniformity around that?
We are a district of choice. And it's been that way oh, for many years, for many years. And so each community is a bit different. So that's why we are doing it at this point in the management we are. So for next year, you know, we have this in place of how we want to move forward. Right now, we are going in a direction and looking at
Okay, so this isn't really meant to be a back and forth, so I'm going to need to close, I'm sorry, I'm going to need to close it up. I think the question is, I appreciate the question, that what about uniformity? So Kyle, why don't you go ahead and have Stephanie go and respond to it?
Yeah, there's a lot to be left to the
All right, sorry, if we start doing back and forth with every person, I've seen this happen, so that's, we don't really do that. But I, we certainly want to hear the comment, the question. So I think the question is around uniformity. And I will say that, you know, there's a variety of ways to do this. And what we have heard all along from so many parents and teachers and principals and staff is that they've asked to actually leave it in part to the school to refine it for the school setting. Because as we've already heard tonight, some schools have after-school care on campus, some don't. Each school is a little bit different. With that said, in the fall, I mean, not in the fall, in the spring, you know, we are basically accommodating people's choice. So they're either in-person coming back or they're distant learning. And so that actually is a whole big puzzle piece, as you can imagine. Because the other thing that we've heard is that people want to stay with their teacher. So all of that is being looked at, refined, site by site. So really, I actually, I mean, I think there is a lot of uniformity in terms of what's going to be happening in the next few weeks in terms of people getting their choice to come back or do different learning at every grade level. And in fact, some districts are not doing their middle school or high school, so we are doing every grade level. But there will be some nuances per school site, whether it might be an AM, PM or an all-day, a couple of days a week. I mean, that's what you're basically working on the next two days, right? With principals, really trying to listen to the school community as to what's best for them. And that to me is equity, right? That's really about equity is, so I don't know if you want to say anymore, Dr. Baker, about that.
You are right, we can talk about the equity piece. That's why we're working with each school community to determine what's going to make best for them. We just had a conversation earlier about a two-day and what that would look like for a middle school grade at one of our school sites. And fine, let's look at it, let's look at the schedule, let's see how we can make that work, if that's going to work for parents and for the teachers. Let's see, and that's one thing that Liz will, and I will start working with each school starting tomorrow.
All right, and so we have one more comment and that's from Shawna Hackworth.
There we go. Thanks for taking my question, this will be really brief. But I appreciate that you guys are already thinking about what's happening. Thanks for um taking my question. This'll be really brief, but um I appreciate that you guys are already thinking about what's happening in the fall and that in the fall for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we'll have an in-person and a virtual academy option. As of now, I understand that it could change tomorrow. Um, and that parents will be getting a survey in April sometime for them to make their selection. But I'm just wondering for those students who have a current school of choice placement, whether that's a Roosevelt student whose school have choiced into Clifford or Cloud, or an Orion student, or an MI student, or anybody that's moved from their homeschool into a school of choice program, will that student lose their spot for the following twenty-two, twenty-three school year if they choose to put their student in a virtual academy? And if that is the case, will we know the answer to that before we have to make our selection in the survey?
I've had, I've had conversations with board members. It's going to be my recommendation for that one school year. If they choose to do that, they do not lose their spot. So
Okay, wonderful.
We would need to make sure that the administrator at that school's of choice holds a spot in that grade level.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Now remember, Shawna, that's the recommendation I'm gonna make, and then they're gonna have to vote on it. So that's the recommendation.
Right. I understand. As long as it's clear in the survey, whichever way you guys have decided, so that parents are informed and not um left the following year to have to scramble for their placement.
Correct. Perfect.
Yeah, and this is a discussion item. And I, I think that what you can't see is that the board panelists were kind of shaking our heads when Dr. Baker was speaking. So um, that recommendation will come formally, but I don't know, just by a show of hands, if the board members are supportive of that idea, just so we can let folks know that they get to keep their spot. Yes. Obviously, this pandemic, we're not trying to penalize anybody. This has been a crazy, crazy time. So we'll have a more formal recommendation, but I think for the audience here tonight, know that that's
It's all lies.
Informally, right. We haven't, the poll that I saw. Okay. All righty. Um, so that's all of our commenters. Yes. Um, all right. So board members, I'll open it up to you. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, sure. Um, I just, I have one minor question, and then, then there's so much information. There's a lot to talk about. But the, the one, one clarifying question was around the care solace is the um, is the service that they're providing routing to other services, and that's what's free of charge? Or is it the actual counseling that's free of charge as well? It's the routing and finding, okay?
Concierge kind of service.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. Okay, thanks. Lots covered here. Um, I'm gonna go back to Mr. Noe's quote that started this whole section here about the students on campus that are safe and happy, and they're experiencing joyful learning and engagement. And so just is great to hear about the progress that's going on, both at that school and, and what's about to happen as we get through there. Um, great to hear about the vaccine update, Dr. Baker. Again, I just wanted to acknowledge and really appreciate your leadership of gathering the other superintendents and really pushing the county forward for that. Um, that progress has been incredible. Um, the whole county is better off for that work, but we certainly are here. And, you know, and I realize that it's across the state. So really, thanks for getting that done. Um, you know, Deputy Superintendent Kelly and RCTA, I'm really glad to see the MOU. Um, so thank you so much for the work that you did. I, I know that there was a tight turnaround time there. Um, but, but seeing that accomplished, it's just, it's remarkable. And the plans that are coming in, um, that's great. I, I just wanna acknowledge both everybody that was part of that negotiation team or what made this happen. I think it really helps that we have such wonderful teaching staff that, you know, almost eighty percent wanna come back after vaccination. And I'm sure that helps. Um, and so that's, that's really good to see there. Um, Dr. Baker, six feet clarification. Thank you for clarifying that. That was, that had been confusing me about whether it was six feet or four feet. Yeah, I know. And I'm glad to hear that you're really, where you're really pushing for it and what you want it to be. And I, I understand the constraints that are there, but, but, but hearing about that six feet. And I think if, um, you know, as you asked of Alisa, if we can be figuring out from the county level to help, help change that to bring more back. But that was, that was great clarification. I appreciated that. Um, the other thing I really liked hearing is that the um the personal involvement that you and Assistant Superintendent Wolf, like, how you're going to go and review every plan at every single site and really make sure that it works, matches with the community, that, that's another, um, I just find, that's a lot of work, right? Like, being, having to go through that, but, but that's, that gives us a lot of confidence. I mean, we don't see the schedules here today, but knowing that you're spending that time reviewing everyone and working it out and looking to see that it fits the community at that site and sort of fits in with the guidelines through the district. Um, you know, that's great. I'm, I'm sure that when we hear the update at our next board meeting, um, we'll, we'll hear happy schedules that are doing the best that they can for the, you know, the constraints that were put into. But um, I wanted to acknowledge that and say thanks. The uh, um, oh, oh, talking about the additional care that um, this, that, you know, the additional supervised time that the students need, I think one of the concerns about um, you know, bringing the kids back onto campus is that it's, if it is this hybrid schedule because of the constraints of time, um, you know, it, it, the, sometimes they'll need additional supervised time. So I was really glad to hear, Dr. Baker, that you're, you're also taking the lead on that to say, hey, we're gonna go work with the partners and make sure, whatever we can do. I understand we might not be able to solve all the problems or get it in there, but, but I'm also, I was happy to hear you take that on as, as, you know, your personal objective to get that, that put in. So that was really nice to hear. And also for acknowledging that, um, when the kids come, do come back in April, the focus on social, emotional health. Yeah, we see that in the principal letters. Um, you know, again, Assistant Superintendent Wolf included as the lead-off for the teacher's letter, um, you know, last week. And, uh, you know, when we did the Equity Committee a couple of weeks ago, um, the California State Board of Education President, Dr. Darling Hammond, came and visited. And Dr. Montes played the quote from, from that section of it, um, at the board meeting. But, you know, the, I wrote down the quote. It was, you know, she says, "What we most need to have happen when kids come back in person is for them to feel excited, engaged, loved, trusted." And to hear that here, that that's really gonna be the priority when they come back is, is super reassuring. It goes back to Mr. Noe's, "Students that are safe and happy and experiencing joyful learning and engagement." Um, so again, you know, another one that's just really good to hear. As you can tell, I'm quite positive tonight. Thank you so much for all of this. Uh, and I think those were the, the, the big points that I had in there. I did have kind of one question. Um, that a lot of this has been, we've been for so long prioritizing students sort of on, with an equity lens and looking at that. And I, I know that we're getting the surveys back and we're putting together the schedules. I'm just wondering if there's anything that we're gonna do as a district to make sure that those that were experiencing the most educational interruption, um, the ones that we prioritize the most, if they're choosing not to come back, are we gonna do an additional outreach to discover? You know, is it, I mean, there's a lot of reasons why students wouldn't wanna come back. But if there's something structural that maybe we can address in the way what we're offering here at the school or something like that, I just wasn't sure if there would be an additional follow-up, kind of on that equity prioritization again, to make sure that the students that we wanna be reaching the most, the ones that we think have had the most interruption, that they're able to take advantage of this.
I think, Mike, you know, what was expressed at the principal's meeting this afternoon, and especially our schools where we have our students who are English language learners, the free and reduced bunch of kids. Um, our foster youth, principals are doing extra outreach to those families. Um, I can tell you that Anna Herrera has done calls to each one to make sure, are you sure this is, you don't wanna do this? And why, even though out there the Boys and Girls Club is there as their partner that can help them make a, make it a whole day for them? There's just this hesitant to come back due to their own personal feelings. It was similar to what Alisa and Cecilia heard on Monday. Uh, maybe you weren't, were you there when, when, when the parent was talking about her own immune system? And, and she really wants to send her child back. It said he's an eighth grader. And she, and he says, "I wanna go back. This is going to probably be the last time I see my friends, because we're all going to high school and we're all not going to the same high school. It's different schools." So I know that principal has been reaching out to her a lot about the safeties that are put in place and to ease her fears. Um, but I don't know if we're gonna get there with, with, with some families. So there is, there is, there is reaching out, believe it, there is reaching out by the side of the administrator. And the community school coordinators also, those that have the coordinators at the sites.
All right, thanks. That's it for me.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Um, I don't, I don't think I have much in addition to what Mike has said. Um, I know that the district and staff have been working really, really hard to um bring our students back. And um, I, I personally have one child that is in-person in learning since January. I have one that's in a hub um on campus, and I have one that's in distance learning from home. So I have some experience with this, and I'm really happy to see more and more students coming back on campus. Um, and I hope, I hope that our families feel safe and know that we um have taken all the safety precautions um, so that everybody does feel safe coming on campus. We did have a lot of questions in the chat, um, concerns about spring break and um the need to quarantine. And I wanted to see if the district can clarify, because the, the recommendations from the San Mateo County Health Department recommend quarantining um if your activities while traveling put you at a higher risk of getting COVID-19. And that includes spending time with people outside of your normal household or traveling on planes, buses, trains, public transportation, or shared vehicles. Um, so I think there needs to be some clarification that if we have families that are visiting with fully vaccinated grandparents um, or traveling outside the Bay Area, but staying in an Airbnb just their family. Um, I don't want families quarantining unnecessarily when their students can be in camp, on campus. And it sounds like that's the situation. So maybe we can get more clarification on that and send that out with the information, Dr. Baker, that you sent out.
So we can check with um County Health Department. We'll do that, and then we'll also check with um the County Office of Education.
Thank you.
I would like to follow up on that. I think uh Nancy should have um something that is the same for all school districts, because it is confusing. And I, you know, I see the children that are on the sites now so happy and uh, you know, just learning and having fun. And I would hate for those that do decide to travel, let's say, to visit the grandparents that are vaccinated and are not really taking those um risks to have to miss out for um the quarantine time. So I would appreciate if we can get something from uh Nancy or, uh, 'cause I think it's gonna be her. The Health Department is, you know, a little bit broader a statement. But I think when it comes to education, Nancy should be able to put something out that we can share with the parents. Um, I also would like to thank everybody at the school district, because um I know that you guys have worked really hard uh to make sure that all the safety protocols are in place, that all the supplies are there. And I know because I'm always sending you stuff and you've already thought about it. You've already checked it off. And, you know, to me, safety is very important. And uh, not that it's the only thing, but especially during this time. So I wanna make sure that we have everything, uh, and we do everything possible to make sure that everybody on campus is safe, um, from the student to the staff, to the visitor. So I know that uh you guys have done, gone above and beyond, I think, in many areas. So I wanna say thank you very much for that. And I do plan to visit once we go back. And not that I don't trust you, but I would like to check it out for myself. And to be totally honest, I really wanna see the students. Uh, I think I, I really would like to see those faces again. Um, I see them now from, you know, uh, a little farther away in the fence, but I would like to get up six feet away, following all the protocols. And as Mike said, you guys have been working really, really hard, uh, working on all the different schedules and all the different deadlines. So I really appreciate all of you uh for everything that you're doing. And, and, you know, from the site administration to the district administration, to the campus uh person that, you know, the custodian, everybody, the one that distributes the food, you've all come together and done an amazing job. And I just wanna say uh how appreciative I am for all that you're doing. Thank you.
So um, as for me, I think I just wanna say that, um, I think Redwood City School District has come a long way. Um, it may seem for some people that we were moving very slowly, but surely, and I think together, um, we are at a place where most be, and so I and I those parents that choose to bring their kids back to the um campus, uh, bring them back. And like we've heard a lot, again, I do wanna thank um all the staff, Classified, Eliana and Kyle for always being present at our meetings, um, Dr. Baker and the Assistant Superintendents. Um, again, thank you, everyone, um, 'cause again, together we are one amazing school district. So thank you, everyone.
All right. And I'd like to echo uh the comments that my colleagues have made and just say, you know, thank you very much as to everybody uh at the staff level who have really been working hard um to get to where we are. And actually, it's exciting. You know, we have been working towards this point really all year. Um, you know, our goal has always been to provide good distant on-learning, um, learning, you know, learning while we needed to, you know. Um, that was really where we started. And as we've moved from the purple tier to the red tier, and hopefully soon to the orange tier, maybe the yellow tier eventually, wouldn't that be nice? Um, and, you know, teachers and staff getting vaccinated, and I think parents getting more comfortable with the idea of coming back and us having our own research uh showing that we're not seeing transmissions on the school sites with our own pilot programs. Um, really just sort of refining everything with our, with our slow kind of coming back, which is what the recommendation was, is you really wanna make sure you build success with what you're doing and everybody's comfortable with it. So I think we're really at the, at this really amazing place where, uh, you know, what you guys are working on the next couple of days. And I, I know that there's some frustration in the community that, um, you know, people are sort of wondering what's going on and am I gonna get my choice and all that? But I think, you know, at this point, what we're doing is we're providing choice of either coming back in person or staying distant learning, depending upon what's best for you, the student and the family. And that, um, you know, I hope that our audience can appreciate that given the mix of in-person and distant learning, that's what, and the six feet uh distancing, that's what creates these hybrid models. And so, um, you know, that's what we'll have this year, but then hopefully next year, if we can shorten this social distance and like you said, we'll create a, a virtual academy and have people come, it can be more normal. So that's certainly our goal. So anyway, I just wanna say thank you very much. Um, I don't think I had really any questions. I've been asking you questions all week, Dr. Baker, so thank you for answering them. Um, okay. And then, and then I did wanna just say that we will be meeting with Nancy McGee tomorrow, our county superintendent. So I have a couple of questions that I'll follow up with her again on. Uh, Maria, you had a good one about the spring break rules, kind of getting clarification, and hopefully we can get that as well as the, the social, the six feet scene, if we can get some movement on that.
Alisa, just to so that our community knows, if a parent doesn't turn in a survey, it's not automatically distance learning. We have staff that are calling each parent that doesn't turn in a survey. And we have our Spanish-speaking staff calling those that need the information in Spanish. So it doesn't just go in the direction of distance learning, as some people are thinking. We have staff that are calling each and every parent that do not respond.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Any other comments before we move on? All right. So uh it is nine ten.
Alright, so it is 9:10. So I think we'll take a five-minute break and that way we can then come back and finish the rest of our agenda. Alright, thanks. And I know we'll lose some of our participants, but thanks for being here. You're welcome to come back in five minutes if you'd like to stay with us. Alright. Oh, the next agenda item is our interim budget report.
So, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes. Sounds good, thanks.
So I am going to present to you a PowerPoint of our second interim. I just wanted to expand this a little bit. So, good evening, Board President McAvoy, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Baker, and members of the community of Redwood City. So this evening, I'm going to present to you the second interim financial report for the Redwood City School District. And I have a few slides for you, but I just wanted to let you know that for this year, for the 2021 year, there are no significant changes, but I will discuss to you later that the projection for the next two years will show material changes from the first interim. So for those that are seeing this report for the first time, the second interim is a financial, reflects the financial and budgetary status of the district as of January 31. So the last presentation we made was for first interim and the cutoff is October 31. So for this time, the cutoff is January 31. So we are required to submit our certification to the County Office of Education on or before March 15. And the governing board is required to certify whether we are positive, qualified, or negative. And that depends on the district's ability to meet their financial obligation for the current and the next two years. So for this report, we're certifying positive for the school district. So the reports that will be submitted also include the multi-year projections. This slide is the same as what I've showed you at first interim. So there's no change because this one is based on October 2020 CalPads. So we have a total of 6,771 students and 59% of that are our unduplicated pupils, which includes the English language learners, our foster youth, and students that qualify for the free and reduced price meals. So this is the same information also. It's just always good to look back for the past 10 years, what happened. So we continue to decline. So the projection for the next two years, still a continuing decline in student enrollment with just a slight increase in the 2122 fiscal year. So this too is the same. We have our seven district funds. But the focus of our discussion for today is more in the general fund, which is our main operating fund. And it also shows our fiscal position for the projection years. We are also, I'm going to also show you the revenues and expenditures in its fund in a few of the slides. So we'll start with a general fund. So this one, this is slide shows what are the changes from first to second interim. So like I mentioned, there's not significant change. So the increase in the general and one balance is about 566,000. And, and and the details of that are shown here. So the net increase in the unrestricted general fund revenues is only 25,000. The increases are offset by some adjustment in revenues. So the increases at second interim is the interest earnings for our account with the San Mateo County Treasurer's Office where we deposit our cash. And then we have also some adjustment in local grants and and in our MAH programs, the medical administrative services. We don't usually put anything on the budget until we actually receive money. So as of second interim, we got 91,000 in MAH. So the, but then there are decreases, as you see here, on leases and rentals. Because of COVID, the budget, the budgeted amount that we anticipated were going to come from, you know, the daily rentals of facilities is removed from the budget. And then we also have a one-year tenant that did not renew the contract this year. So that's the adjustment there of 115,000. And so the net impact on the revenues is 25. On the expenditure side, there are some savings because at the beginning of the year and through first interim, we, our budget includes vacancies that we thought it would be filled during the year. So we know that some of those positions are not going to be filled. So we reduced the budget for that amount. So there's a 384,000 savings for certificated, a small amount in classified, and then some adjustment in the benefits. So the books and supplies, there's an increase in the budget of 104,000. And that's because there's some carryovers that we have to include in our budget. So the net effect on the total expenditures is a reduction in the budget of 363. And then also, we look at the restricted programs. So this is the one that I'm showing you is for unrestricted. But the restricted programs are also reviewed and there were some adjustments in both revenues and expenditures. So at second interim, the contribution from unrestricted general fund has been reduced by 178. So these three items resulted to an increase in unrestricted general fund of 566,000. So the next slide is showing our total general fund revenues. So we have 111.6 million. A big part of that, of course, is our basic aid LCFF property taxes. And then we get some money from the state and our supplemental concentration grant, which is generated from our unduplicated pupils. So this slide shows the details of the amounts. So as I mentioned, 70% is from LCFF revenues. And then we get special ed tax, taxes from the self-allocation. And then these federal revenues of 11.5 million includes about 7 million in the CARES Act money. So the rest are pretty the same with our local revenues and parcel taxes. So this next slide shows the general fund expenditures is 104.3 million. So this compared to revenues of 111 shows we're deficit spending by about 3 million. So the next slide shows also, again, the details of that expenditure. So about 75% are salaries and benefits for certificated and classified. And then here in the books and supplies and services, this is where we have that 7 million in, in CARES Act money. So this are included in here. These are one-time. And so in the projection for next year, these are eliminated. So basically, the, the one-time CARES Act money showed in the revenue and it's all showed in the expenditure. So it's just nothing on the ending balance. So so I'm going to the multi-year projection unless you have any questions on, on the general fund only. And I can't see the chat. If there's any questions, just let me know. So I'm going with the, the multi-year projection. I just want to show you what are the assumptions made when we develop our projections for the 2122 and 2223 fiscal year. So if you recall, on the first interim, the projection for secured property taxes was a 0%. So for second interim, after we had a meeting with the County Assessors Office representative and understanding what their process is in determining the assessed valuations, we feel comfortable about putting in a 2% increase instead of a 0%. So whether that is conservative or aggressive, you know, there's a lot of things unknown as I'm going to show you in the next few slides. So for student enrollment, as I mentioned, there will dislike increase based on their consultant's projection for 2122 and then continuing decline in the future years. For the non-LCFF revenues in the unrestricted general fund, we are projecting flat funding. So there is no growth for the next two years. And then, of course, you know, our, our negotiations with the bargaining units are still pending. There's no compensation increase in this multi-year projection except for step on column adjustment of 1.5%. And on the benefit side, we project a 5% increase in health and welfare costs. And on the SDRS and purse contributions are what's in the budget proposal. Our workers' comp rate is still the same at 4.32 and we will know more about it once we have the final numbers from SMX. And I think that would be really sometime in May. In our, in our NYPD, we are showing the, a potential reduction in FTE because of our projection of a decline in student enrollment. However, you know, as we know more about opening schools next year, this may not be true with social distancing and smaller class size and all of that. So our protection might change when we develop our next year's budget. So as I mentioned, negotiation spending, this is just an information that for us, based on the second interim numbers, I'm sorry, this is not very clear, but the cost of 1% in compensation increase for us is about 707,000. And this would be across the board for all bargaining units. So depending on what will be later on agreed upon, this is just a snapshot of what it will cost the district. So this, this is the multi-year projection. So I I'm sorry, the numbers are very small, but it's really important that we see the big picture for three years because that's a requirement by law that CDE and the County Office of Education, we have to submit and present our projection for three years, current and to, to subsequent year. So as I've mentioned, the increase here is very minimal from, in unrestricted general fund. And that's because first and second interim is really a short period of time. We have only three months. So there's really not much change from then. But you would notice in, in the, in the projection for the next two years, this growth here in LCFF revenues, that's where the 2% is. There are, of course, several components of this LCFF sources. It's a combination of property taxes, state aid that we're getting and all others. It's locked here as an LCFF revenues. But note that this is, this includes 2% in the secured taxes. So the federal, state, and other local on the unrestricted portion are flats from 2122 and 223 year. So the one that I wanted to show you, which is also a change from, from the first interim, is the the leases. So I wanted to point my cursor. But if you look at the line where it says projected revenues from leasing closed sites, that's all of the leases and revenues that we have. In the first interim, we have included the revenue for our Adelante property, which we thought would be listed out in 2122. But because we are now reopening that, we're having RFP, that's revenues delayed. So we remove it in the 2122 year and just have it added to the 2223. So you'll see that jump in leases and rentals for 2122, 1.5, then it becomes 2.8. And then in terms of the expenditures, so as I mentioned, there's no compensation increase in this projection. It's just the 1.5% step on column. But in 2122, there is about, about 600,000, 600,000 increase in both certificated and classified. And that's because in the first interim, I mean, yes, in the first interim in 2021, we have made an adjustment on the substitute and the noon eights budget that we didn't utilize for 2021 year. But we know that we needed that back when we reopened the school. So that's an increase in the 2122 projection. The other material change that we have in our projection is the interfund transfers out. I wish I could, oh, here. So my cursor here. So you'll see this 1.3 million. So in 2122, that's our contribution, the projected contribution to the cafeteria program. As I've mentioned during the first interim presentation, that we are operate, we have operating deficit in that program because of a really, really decline in, in the meal programs. So we are working on that and, but for now, you know, we are projecting a contribution from the unrestricted general fund. So as you can see, we are deficit spending here and then I'm just looking at unrestricted. And then it grows because, you know, other than what I've mentioned, all the operating expenditures here are also adjusted for inflation costs. And the inflation cost is just calculated based on the Consumer Price Index, which is 1.57% next year and 1.82% in the 2223 year. So with that, the operating deficit in the unrestricted general fund is increased, is protected to increase by almost 5 million. And then you'll see like a drop here, but that's not, it's not because we've eliminated operating deficit. We just have to pull money from other funds, from our RDA funds to, for us to be able to meet the 3% reserve. And that's the state required minimum. So as you can see here on the reserve balance for the current year, if we close the 21, 2021, the current year, we will have 6% reserve, 6% of our total expenditures. But because of the projected operating deficit next year, it's down to 4.55% in 2122. And then we could not meet that 3% in 2223 without transferring funds from RDA. So that's how our, our second interim projection looks like with all the assumptions that we have made. So are there any questions on this one? So moving forward to the next slide.
Hold on, Priscilla. I'm sorry. I had a quick question.
Yeah.
If you can go back to that slide, I just want to make sure I understand what you said. So did you say that the deficit spending from the cafeteria fund?
Yes.
In the shoot, sorry, I have to move something. In the 2122 is going to be 1.395 million?
1.3 million, yes.
Okay. So clearly, we need to circle back to that. We've had some conversations in previous meetings, but we need to get a handle on that. We cannot afford that level of deficit spending. So I just want to clearly state that. And I'm assuming my board colleagues are feeling the same way. So we'll have to come up with a strategy to figure. So we'll have to come up with a strategy to figure out, how do we get control over our cafeteria fund?
Yes.
Right management of that, yeah.
Thank you for your comment, and we are really looking at this too. But I'm hoping that this is not going to happen with us, you know, with our plan to reopen. And hopefully all of the students are back and so we will be back to normal. So but for now, we are putting that as a conservative way of projecting where we are. But we are hopeful that things would change. There is a positive indication with our February count, which is significantly higher than the previous months. So we're hoping that this will not happen. But for now, we're putting it in. We're also looking at what change we should do with the program so that we can eliminate deficit spending. But because of the pandemic and because of the many things that we have to do, we were just projecting a status quo for the program for the next year because of, you know, a very short timeframe, plus there's still so much uncertainty.
Okay, well, Dr. Baker and Priscilla, and I know working with Anna Ligu and others. And then I also had some conversations with Wendy Kelly. You know, maybe figure out how best the board can support whatever actions we wanted, we need to take. So whether that be through the food service committee or the budget committee or, you know, whatever forum you feel like we can be helpful. I know that all of us want to do that because obviously we care about our food program. We know it's important to many of our students and families, and it's always been a highlight of our district. And so, and we've always had reserves. So it's concerning to sort of see the direction we've taken, and it is a pandemic year. So that's sort of understandable. So anyway, just kind of keep us informed and let us know how we can best support either coming up with additional recommendations or actions or whatever.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, to mention these, that it's nothing about mismanagement or anything. It's just that for the current year, and there were restrictions on layoffs. So although we have very, very low meal count, you know, we kept all of our employees, their salaries and benefits remain the same because of the state restriction. So.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Priscilla, so you, you mentioned something about the February count. Are you referring to perhaps more families picking up meals in February?
Yes, and then some students also coming back to school.
Great, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions on the multi-year projection? Thank you. So this one is just a reminder about our basic aid status. As I've mentioned way back when, the first time, you know, this is the second year that we're basic aid. And so there's, while there's an upside, you know, advantages of being basic aid, like our excess property taxes and the minimum state aid that we continue to receive them for basic aid. There is these uncertainties and forecasting difficulty. And there are of the things here that are listed, like property tax collections, they're year to year. Few of these items listed are happening now. So like local economic conditions, not really local, but the worldwide economic conditions with the pandemic. So there's that concern about property tax collections. And this is also something that assessors offices indicated with the CBOs when they had a meeting with them. And as a consequence to what's happening with the businesses in our area, that they're anticipating a reassessment, a request for reassessment down of property values, especially for those that are hardly hit. So for examples, we have hotels and, you know, businesses in the area that have a very low, if not zero revenues, you know, at this time, they're heavily impacted. So they're anticipating that there could be requests for reassessment of the property values. And there's also still pending tax appeals that are undergoing litigation, such as the genetic and all of the other ones that are, that both are publicized in their website. So you can see how many pending litigations are there right now. And so this is, this is something that we have to consider in our projections. So like I said, is 2% conservative or is it too, you know, or is it aggressive? So I wanted to show you here also what happened during the great recession. So as you can see, that the growth is really high. This is Redwood City's assessment rule. So the growth has been high for many years. But if you recall, it, we had the great recession which started here in 0708, December 2008. But it did not really affect the property values until two years after. So, and this is kind of consistent with what the assessors office had mentioned to us, that it would take about 18 months before you see the impact. So in the, during the great recession, property values, the growth went down to just 1.71%. And there was a year when it's really negative and then 0.15 and then 2.73, and then it went back up. So this is our big change because we've always expecting, you know, in my previous budget assumptions, I have always projected 5% growth and then be surprised it will more than 5%. But this time we did 2%. So there's a lot unknown whether the great recession would be worse than what we're having or is the COVID-19 pandemic worse than that? So we still don't know, and we are constantly communicating with assessors office and the county to give us anything new that they see happening with property values. And we have requested regular meeting with them for them to share any new information so that we can anticipate what would be the impact to us, especially for the basic aid districts. So, so this is what we have right now. Hopefully, you know, that it's not, that it will be more than the 2% projection that we have. But still, we don't know. I'm hoping that the next property tax report would be in April or May. So we're hoping that we have some news by then and we can make an adjustment in our projection when we develop next year's budget. So for basic aid districts and actually for all school districts, it's important that we maintain fiscal stability to avoid significant disruption in student programs. So what is a stable reserve? So for the, the government finance officers association, they recommend 17% or at least two months of operating expenditures. So our monthly operating expenditure for Redwood City School District, which I will show you when we get to the cash flow section, is about seven to eight or nine million per month. So, so with that, you know, we have to, at this point, think about how much reserve should be key for the Redwood City School District, knowing how volatile our property taxes and how, you know, how difficult it is to project what would be our property tax revenues in the coming years. So a few items that we should maybe consider. And if I, you know, get the direction from the board and the superintendent, you know, then we can better prepare for developing next year's budget. So right now we have a 3% board mandated reserve. But what is happening right now is sometimes we fully fund the 3%, sometimes we don't. It depends on what we have in our projection. If we can afford it, it's fully funded, and if it's not, it's not. So, but we can intentionally and purposefully say, we'll fully fund the 3% board mandate. Also, right now, we still have 17 million in the RDA. We can also commit by a board resolution to keep certain amounts in the RDA for future uncertainties, for anything unforeseen events. And so if we do, for example, 7% or 6%, actually, they should be 6%. The 7.5 would be about 6%. So we can also do that. So at least, you know, when something happens in the future with uncertainties in funding, that, you know, there's something that we can, we can use in the future. So those are the things that we can think of now and say, you know, make a decision what, how much reserve do we fund? So if we fully fund the 3%, for example, and still maintain the three, the state required 3%, then that's 6%. And then if we have RDA money, then we are about close to the recommended 17%. So that's something to consider for us in the future. So, is there any question on the multi-year projection before I go to the Castro?
Priscilla, I have a question. With the RDA dollars, there has been some discussion at the legislature level that those RDA dollars may disappear.
That's correct. So the last study that was conducted by the San Mateo County, that was, I think, three or four years ago. The projection is that we will continue to receive that approximately 2.4 million for the next 10 years. So that's the study that was done. But I know that the county is again thinking of doing another study for that. Because since then, there's a lot of change on the RDA. The reason why they're continuing to set aside money on the RDA is for the long-term debts that were incurred by those redevelopment agencies in the past that they have to honor. But most, some of those long-term debts were paid off. And so they wanted to conduct another study. I haven't, I don't know if that has already started. So the concern will be, would that shorten that 10 years or would that lengthen it? So, so that's something that we have to also consider for future.
And, and so just to follow up on that, that would be for the future annual monies we receive, right? They wouldn't come back and take the RDA money that we have in the, okay, good.
Yes, yeah. So what we've received, we, we, we have it and it will just determine what we're going to use it for. Yeah. So when, 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 for example, they're not, they're not funding the RDA. Let's assume that they shorten it, it's not funded. All of the ones that's, that put into that pot of money will be distributed back as a regular property taxes. But the impact is not going to be a dollar for dollar anymore because it will be spread out based on your ABH factor. So we still don't know what that would be, is it higher or is it lower if it comes back to us of property taxes? So so now I just wanted to show you the state deferral that we have right now this year and the next. So we're required to also prepare cash flow projection for two years minimum that is included in the interim reports. So for the deferrals, it doesn't affect basic aid districts much because we're primarily funded by property taxes. So for property taxes, we are getting 45% in December, April 45. Then we get 100% within the year. But we are, as a basic aid district, we're still getting state aid. So for us, that's about 12.8 million in state aid. So that's the one that's subject to deferral. So normally, if there are no deferrals, this is the way that the state apportioned state aid. So we get, we call that 559 because it's 5%, 5%, then 9% each month through January. And because these are advanced apportionment, meaning they're just based on your last year's funding, they true it up in February. So in February, that we calculate what is due to a district. And so whatever is left remaining after the 5599% allocation, you get 20% each month of that remaining balance until June. And they're supposed to get 100% within the year. But that's not happening this year. So that 20% that we're supposed to get in February, 53% of that is deferred to November. Then the March allocation, 82% of that is going, you know, we'll receive it in October. Same thing here for April and then May, and then 100% of the June allocation, we will not get it until July. So that's 2021. For next year, with the governor Newsom's budget proposal, this will be eliminated. So next year, this, this February to May is eliminated. But 100% of June will still be deferred in 2122. So with this, this is how Redwood City's cash flow projections for the current year. So we began the fiscal year with 9.8 million in cash with our county comptroller's office. And we're ending the year with 8.2. So this month of July, because the cutoff for the second interim is January. So these July to January numbers are true numbers. This is what we actually receive in cash and what we paid for payables and expenditures. So February through June are just projections based on the standard that we have in funding and based on our performance or our trend from last year for the other expenditures. But next year, this is where we are just, just making projection based on, on the standard again. So here on property taxes, we're getting December, April, and then it's true up in June, whatever the remaining balance. So we're still projecting 100% in property taxes. Although for our principal apportionment, we, next year, only the June month is deferred. So we are getting zero, we're going to get it July the following month. So you'll see if we just follow standard. And then, of course, the ones that don't have standards, that calculate our spreadsheet or our cash flow projection, just looks at what happened last year and just mirror it for our projection. So as you can see, for 2122, we are anticipating negative balances here until we get our money, our property taxes in December. So that's very typical of basic aid districts because, you know, while waiting for our proper tax allocation to come, we're having negative balance here. So the good thing for San Mateo County is that they allow these to happen. You're just going to be earning negative interest for this month. You don't have to actually borrow money from somewhere and fill the negative amount here. They allow you to carry, to have a negative balance for as long as by the end of the year, you're positive. They'll never allow you to have negative balance in June. So based on this, I, we don't anticipate doing borrowings from outside for this year and next. And also if we have to, we still have a little bit of money from our other funds that we can do on, on temporary interfund transfers if we have to. But we don't anticipate doing borrowings this year and next for cash. So any question on the cash flow? So I'm going to show you all the other district funds. So I'm going to show you all the other district funds. So child development, this is, there's nothing significant change from our first interim. So this is where I mentioned to you about cafeteria fund that is deficit spending this year. And next year, I put 1.3 because of inflation costs and potential negotiation settlements. And then deferred maintenance, this are just normal, and this are, this are building fund. They, for our pri, for the bond construction projects for this year, the, the budget to spend 99.2 million. This is our developer fees funds and there's a special reserve. So this overall, we have projected ending balance of 72 million for all our funds. So what this slide is showing you, what is, what is the money left by the end of this fiscal year for our bond construction and modernization projects? So as shown in the past, there were three funding sources. One, one is all fully used up, our California Clean Energy Jobs. So this is about 2 million at the beginning. And then we have impact fees. So the district has contributed about 10.8 million from developer fees to the bond construction and modernization project. And 5.7 is left of that 10.8 million, and it will be fully spent this year. So the proceeds of the GO bonds from Nesherti, at the beginning of the year, we have 135 million. They plan to, for this year, it will be 99.2 million will be spent. So by the end of the year, we have 38 million and all the other funding sources will be used up. Here is also the details of the Fund 25 Capital Facilities Funds. For other districts, there are districts that don't have RDA. So for other, normally, Fund 25 is just for developer fees, but in our case, we have the RDA here. So we are, at the beginning, we have 14.4, the 2.4 million ongoing allocation is in here. We're not using it on the general fund. And so it's, so by the end of the year, we're projecting 17 million here for RDA. And then our developer fees, we continue to receive money and we're partnering with the Sequoia Union High School District here. And so for the developer fees, we project 1.1 million in total ending balance. And that portion that's allocated to the bond projects will be used up. So in total, RDA and developer fees were projecting 18.2 million in Fund 25. So I think this is a repeat. I'm so sorry. This is the same. So I'm going to show you now our CARES Act funds for this year and what we anticipate to receive next year. So for this year, we have a total of 6.9 million in funding for the district. So we have two types. One is the ESTER Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. We have 1.1. And then the Learning Loss Mitigation, which are, has three components. We have the Governor's Emergency Education Relief here or the Corona Relief CRF, and then the General Fund, General Fund of the State. So, so we have seven, about 7 million in total. These two, first two items have a longer spending timelines. It has to be fully spent by September 30, 2022. The learning, the CRF fund should have been fully spent by December 31, but it was extended through, it should have been spent last year, December 30, but it was extended to December 31, 2021 by the federal government. However, the California shortened that deadline. And for California, the deadline to fully spend is May 31. And we have to certify by the end of the month that we are indeed fully spending this money. The reason why the state of California shortened it is because anything that the district did not spend, they will sweep it. And so they, they're giving themselves timeline to span what they sweep from districts through December 31. So this column here shows what we have used these funds for today. So that are actually spent or obligated. So for the ESTER funds, we have utilized about half a million to replace the teacher's MacBook to, which they need for distance learning and supporting the students. So that was already delivered, I believe, and received, goods are received. And then for the CRF funds, which have a very short, so we thought it was December 30. So we've identified what needs to be reported, spent. So we've already reported three times this day, what we planned, cycle one, first cycle of reporting, we've reported 635, cycle to 1.5, cycle two is the 318 and the 2.1. So in total, we've already reported 4.6 million of the, of this amount. So only 27,000 is left, but that's, we can identify some expenditures that need, when we have to on this one. So the next one that is closing the deadline is the General Fund, part of the Learning Loss Mitigation. This has to be fully spent by June 30. So we, here are the planned expenditures for the remaining balance. So for the ESTER Fund, ESTER and the GEAR Fund, we have to do equitable services to the private schools in our area. So we have Mount Carmel and St. Pius here. But comparing their number of students to the Redwood City School District eligible students, their portion is really small. You know, it's over 12 million on the ESTER funds and about, I mean, 12,000, 12,000, and then about 6,000 on the GEAR Fund. So for the, after this expenditure, we have a budgeted about half a million for, for this summer school to be utilized for the summer school. And then we have about 141,000 remaining, but we still have September 30, 2022 to fully spend that money. And for the GEAR Fund, we have, we have on the budget stipends based on the RCT MOU for teachers coming back in January. So that, that, that would cost about 636,000. So with these estimate, this is not enough. So we have 108,000 there that's uncovered with, with GEAR. So we will use that money from there, here in the General Fund. So with all of these plans, we will have remaining balance of 217,000 for the current year CARES money. So for, so this is the current year, and these are the allowable uses of the ESTER funds and then the Learning Loss Mitigation Fund. So this is our guidelines in determining are those allowable or not. Because we know these are federal resources that are heavily audited. And we want to make sure that spending it the right way so that, you know, several years after, they're, we're not going to be held liable when they not, when they consider anything unauthorized. So, so so for this, for next year, what we know now, and these, and these are available, this ESTER 2 is what we expect to, this is the amount we're expecting to get. This amount is already posted on the CDE website. So ESTER 2 funding for next year, the spending timeline is September 30, 2023. This is allocated based on the 2021 Title I eligibility and your percentage statewide. And so this is the estimate for Redwood City School District. The allowable expenditures for ESTER 2 are the same, plus it's expanded to facilities-related expenses like ventilators for the classrooms and other items. So there are the added allowable expenditures for these, for this funding source. So the in-person instruction and the extended learning, this is the 6.6 billion deal that the governor had with the legislature that's already been approved. So if we qualify by having our in-person, in-person instruction by April 1, the district's estimated funding would be 2.2. So there's our LCFF share, state by this 0.1106. So that's the basis of that calculation. And then for the, so this is part of the 6.6 billion. Remember how much is for the in-person? I think 2, 2 billion of the 6.6 is for in-person. And then 4.6 is for expanded learning. So for expanded learning, we get a little funding for our homeless student population. And then it will also, it was also calculated based on our LCFF share. So for the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant, we get 4.8. So with this that we know now, it's about, it's over 11 million. But again, these have a strict spending requirement. And so when we, I don't have these yet in our second interim. It will be included in our projection when we adopt our budget for next year. But again, revenues would just be equal identified spending plans. We are also expected to receive a GEAR 2 funding, but it, the narratives and, you know, expenditures, some information is already on the CDE website, but they don't have the dollar calculation yet at this time. So that's, then, and it's no longer CARES Act, it's called CRRC. So for the next step, so that's what we have for a second interim. For next step, we will be developing our 2122 budget and multi-year projection soon. We're waiting for the May revised numbers. And so what we have in our assumptions might change again, when we develop our 2122 budget. And we are going to start with our new three-year LCAP. And this time, the budget overview for parents, if you recall, was presented with the first interim. This time, it will be presented with the adopted budget. And then we are, as I mentioned, hoping to get more information in April about the property taxes and, and hoping for settlement for our collective bargaining negotiations. And then with that, we're also preparing to close the books for 2021. I think that's, this is all that I have for you today. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Before we do that, Janet reminded me of our board policy that we recently updated that has to do with our meetings, and we're supposed to actually adjourn by 10:00 PM or make an intentional decision about extending. So I didn't want to interrupt Priscilla's presentation, but before we move on to questions, and we do have some additional agenda items, would someone like to make a motion to extend the meeting to a certain time? And while you make that decision, we have the ability to extend it twice. So would someone like to make a motion to extend?
I'll make a motion to extend. I, I'm looking at the agenda. I don't know how much more time we need. If I say to 10:45?
That sounds good to me. How about, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Janet and Mike on the 10:45 roll call vote.
Tracy Wells?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson?
Aye.
Tracy Marcus? Vice President Diazloca?
Aye.
President McAvoy?
Aye. I know Cecilia sometimes has difficulty with her internet, so she may have popped off. Okay, all right. So thank you, Priscilla, for your presentation. Any questions or comments from the board members?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I know it was a lot of work to get it in, in time, and that the budget office is probably, probably feeling a little overwhelmed. Also, I realize there's so many uncertainties in sort of making these multi-year predictions, particularly this year. And so I just wanted to make sure that kind of getting the big takeaways from it. Based upon the assumptions that we have here, it looks like we're talking like a $5 to $8 million structural deficit year over year that is being funded by drawing down the board reserve in that Fund 25. Is that, is that the right takeaway from that?
So our annual deficit would be, we started with three and it's growing by four and, and five, or possibly six on the third year.
Okay. And then, and then, of course, right, tax rolls can change that, revenue can change that and that sort of thing. Is it fair to assume that when we put those federal dollars back into the budget next year and the year after, that that's going to be a much rosier picture? Or are those federal dollars really allocated for different spending?
For the federal dollars, the good thing about it is that there's no supplement or supply requirement for those, meaning that if, that if there are expenditures that are already incurred by the districts, you cannot use it if we, there's a supplement or supply requirement. But there's none. However, because it, you have to relate it to the purpose of the funding. So if it's learning loss mitigation, there's only a few things that you can use. But perhaps there's something that we've already been paying that are allowable as an expenditure. So perhaps it could help a little bit with our general fund spending.
But probably won't fix it.
No, it won't fix it.
Okay, that's, that's, thanks.
I don't have any questions, but Cecilia and I did meet with Priscilla and John to go over the budget. And one of the things that we need to remember is that the rental fees didn't come in. So that was a big, big issue for us. The other thing, as you heard, is that we're not meeting revenue with the food, the cafeteria. So we're hoping that that will change again once our students are back on campus and things would get better with that. We are working, as Priscilla said, on trying to figure out ways to increase the participation and bring down that deficit. The other thing is that I'm sure you all heard that schools are getting lots of money. And as you saw in Priscilla's presentation, those monies have to be used for certain things. We can't just use it for, you know, salary increases or any of those things that have to be spent on specific items. So although we did get extra money, we have spent it on those items like replacing the teachers' laptops, getting students new Chromebooks and hotspots and things of that nature. And, you know, I also want to say thank you to Priscilla and her staff because on top of everything else, they've had to take on the additional work that comes in with all these extra dollars that we got to buy the equipment and get our students ready to learn from home. So I don't have any questions, just a lot of gratitude for all the wonderful work that Priscilla and her team do to make sure that we're on target. And at a future time, I would like us to discuss increasing the reserves for the reasons that Priscilla has said. Also, we need to make sure that we have enough money in the bank to pay our employees. And at the moment, we're not quite there yet. And, you know, having lived through some years where we had to go out and borrow money, I really don't think that's the best way to proceed in the future if we can help it. I really don't think that's the best way to proceed in the future if we can help it. So that's a conversation that I would like to have in one of our future agendas.
No questions from me, but thank you, Priscilla, and thank your, your team for all the work that you guys do to, to keep us moving along. And also Maria and Cecilia, thanks for your work on the Budget Committee too and working through all this with Priscilla.
Cecilia, any comments? Questions?
No, I don't have any, I froze for a second. But yeah, no, same thing. Thank you, Priscilla. I just wanted to say again, thank you to Priscilla and her staff for working on the budget. And again, like Maria mentioned, we are working on the food, on the, on the fund, for the cafeteria fund. And hopefully things will get better for Redwood City. And let's see. And I know like for the developer fees, that's always the extra money that we get from the developers. Redwood City gets a 60% once it gets 40%. So that's, that's great. Now, that it is a one-time fund and it seems like we do get a lot of money, but unfortunately it goes to help with the student learning. So that's my only comment.
So thank you very much, Priscilla, for the report. And I do agree with Maria. I think the different things you said, we need to come back and take a look at. And I think, you know, we have been deficit spending for years now and kind of patchworking and putting it together. I don't think we're, I mean, I know there's lots of districts who are doing that. We're not the only one because of course, it's not fully fund schools the way they need to. We've had a lot of extra expenses the last year. But I do have concerns, I think similar to what Mike brought up, is we're sort of starting to look at a cliff. So we are going to really have to think, you know, a couple of years ago, we went through that painful process of realizing that we needed to close and merge schools to save money and also lease those out. And so we do need to lease those out, but even with that, I think we still have some structural deficits that we need to think about. And then we know that we want to continue to provide for our teachers and our classified and our managers and our staff in terms of salary increases. So how do we balance? We know we're deficit spending, we know we want to do some additional salary increases. What that means to me is we're going to have to look structurally. Are there some additional things we can do to change what we're doing? That's either bringing in more money through a parcel tax or through, I don't know what else, you know, private foundation money or, you know, we have limited ways to bring in extra money, right? And/or looking at what else can we do, right? And of course, that means cuts. We already feel like we're bareboned, but we're going to have to do something. So I know we're sort of busy with, you know, right now, we just could get through this emergency and we have the funds to be able to pay because fortunately, we have done a good job in reserving, right, through this RDA and being able to use it. But I don't know when that work should start. You know, and you can think about that, Dr. Baker, that we want to sort of take that on. But I, I do think at some point we need to, right?
Yeah. All of you are on there. That we're going to need to start to think about this and it's going to have to start before Priscilla presents the, the budget in June. Let us get the school opens and moving in that direction. And then we need to come back to this. And then it was really good that it was brought to our attention by Maria that we're getting substantial dollars from the state and the feds, but that's one-time monies. It's one-time monies and it's specifically laid out how you can spend it. So that's not going to be ongoing. So once we get the schools reopened, then I think what we need to do is most likely have a study session. You know, maybe on an off-board meeting Wednesday to really look at this and then to come up with a determination of what are we going to do for the next three years? If Priscilla did give us a, a suggestion of where we should be with the reserves and definitely to hold us in a situation where if something were to happen like that recession that we just previously had, where we were borrowing money. And I asked Priscilla, what's the cost when we do borrow? She goes, it's about 2%. Or we were, was it a trans? We were doing a trans if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Priscilla? And, and, and she said it's about 2%. So we don't want to go there. So we really need to tighten up and, and look at this. And at the same time, still understand that, as you said, Elisa, we want to make sure that we're able to give our employees an increase in salary too. So I would suggest in the near future, let's get, let's get the schools running again. And then let's, let's probably have a study session on this and move forward. Thank you, Priscilla. And on all that work on these, on these numbers. I know every time I want to spend something, I always call her, is it the right thing to do? Do we have the money? Can I, you know, do it out of this pot and not out of that? No, it's too bad we have to nickel and dime everything. It just, it's crazy.
Well, and thank goodness that the state and the federal government are coming up with extra money because we actually really do need it, right?
Right.
All right, well, do I have a motion to approve the second interim budget report?
So moved.
Maria?
Second.
Mike seconds it. Roll call vote, please.
Tracy Wells?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson?
Aye.
Tracy Marcus? Vice, Vice President Deasloco?
Aye.
President McAvoy?
Aye. All right, and we already approved 14, 2 and 14.3. So 14.4 is the SEBEST waiver for substitute teachers?
Yes, thank you. We are bringing this to you tonight in order to look ahead for 2122. And some, you know, the SEBEST test is given ever so often. So this helps bridge time between tests for candidates. But certainly the SEBEST waiver is the only waiver that's part of this process. And our substitutes do eventually do take it and pass it. But there is this, this waiver from the state that we can utilize in a pinch. So we're looking for approval.
Do I have a motion to approve? Any questions I should ask? This is pretty standard. All right, do I have a motion to approve? Janet?
Second.
Mike seconds it. Roll call vote, please.
Tracy Wells?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson?
Aye.
Tracy Marcus?
Aye.
Vice President Deasloco?
Aye.
President McAvoy?
Aye. All right, 14.5 is approval of release and reassignment of certificated administrative personnel?
Yeah, so the board was given the list earlier as to the two employees in which this affects. There will be a release of certificated administrative personnel. Are there any questions?
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, Maria and Janet, roll call vote, please.
Tracy Wells?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson?
Aye.
Tracy Marcus?
Aye.
Vice President Deasloco?
Aye.
President McAvoy?
Aye. All right, 14.6, adoption of Resolution 16, determination of order of employment of certificated employees for elimination of or reductions in particular kinds of services. And it continues.
Yes, thank you. So this resolution is coming to you tonight so that in the event in which we need to address the seniority list as it relates to layoffs or potential layoffs, that we have set the determination of priority for those on the seniority list. Temporary teachers are not listed on the seniority list. It's seniority, the seniority date is your first date in paid probationary status with a properly registered non-interne, non-emergency credential.
Yeah. Okay. And I think, I think in all my years on the board, we've only had to actually use this once, but we did use it, you know? So it is important and that gives the employees an opportunity to look at all of this and comment to us if they see something wrong and all of that. So yes, I don't, you know, hopefully we won't have to go there, but if we do, this is, this is what we have. Good. All right, democracy in action, right? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
They're moved.
Second.
Let's see, Cecilia's second. Mike and Cecilia, roll call vote, please.
Tracy Wells?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson?
Aye.
Tracy Marcus?
Aye.
Vice President Deasloco?
Aye.
President McAvoy?
Aye. Okay, 14.7, adoption of Resolution 17 and 18, reduction or elimination of certificated services with fiscal year 2021.
Yes, thank you. So we're looking ahead for next year. So this will affect positions moving into the 2122 school year. On the resolution, Resolution 17, we have the district gate teacher at 60%. And Assistant Superintendent Liz Wolfe has another idea of how gifted students can be addressed in our district. So she'll be discussing that with the board. The Director of COVID-19 Employee and Student Response, this seems like an unusual situation at this time of year. However, given now that we have had a few months into this position, we recognize it actually is more clerical in nature. And so we will be pulling, we'll be reevaluating, looking at the needs for clerical support as it relates to communication for COVID-19. So this will move into a different position for 2122. And then a reading intervention teacher at Orion at 50%. At this time, the principal at Orion has noted that this program will just continue at 50% out of site funded, out of site funds. And the counselor and the steam toaster at Roy Cloud, the PTO has funded this position in the past and has not yet made a determination about these two programs. So this could very well be a timely issue, but I'm awaiting from, I'm awaiting for the decision of Roy Cloud on these two particular positions.
All right, any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Excuse me, Elisa?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, that was just 17.
Yes, I did speak about 18 for a moment.
You're right, you're right. All right, they're both together, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. So in regards to Resolution 18, this particular position, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Equity is still important work, very important work in our district. However, Dr. Montes will be retiring and we are going to be analyzing this position and all of the tasks associated. And other directors will be taking on these tasks in other areas. So that update will happen later this spring as well. Congratulations, Linda. Okay, thank you, Elisa.
Oh, sure. So do I have a motion to approve 17 and 18?
So moved.
Second.
Janet, Maria, roll call vote, please.
Tracy Wells?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson?
Aye.
Tracy Marcus?
Aye.
Vice President Deasloco?
Aye.
President McAvoy?
Aye. Okay, so we're on to board and superintendents reports. Who would like to go first?
I will go. We just had the Budget Committee with Priscilla, John and Cecilia. That's all I got.
Thank you for serving on that. You're going to have some work ahead.
Yeah, I did the bond, bond committee and then there was CTA, along with a couple of other groups, sponsored a new school board member training for the changes in regulations around charter authorization. And so I just want to thank Mr. Kegel and Max Washburn for sending me that information. I took that a week or two ago.
So I also attended the bond committee meeting and I attended the Redwood City Chamber Education Committee meeting. Elisa and Dr. Baker and I had a workforce housing committee meeting with our consultant to prepare for next week's meeting with Sabrato. And then Elisa and I also had a policy committee meeting with, with Wendy Kelly.
And for me, of course, the Budget Committee. And then I also attended that Hoover Cafecito and that was it for me.
I'm glad you could go to that. I got that message too late and wasn't able to go. So that's nice that you were able to be there. Let's see, I've had, in addition to what folks have already talked about, we did have a superintendent advisory committee, I think. Cecilia, were you at that with me? I think so, yes. Actually, that was the night you were going in and out on your internet, but you were mostly there. Okay, so superintendent advisory committee, and those are also always really useful to hear from parents and teachers. So thank you for doing those, Dr. Baker and Jorge, I should say, because I know he's good backup. I did have a conversation with Basin Gals Fattis of RCEF. And at some point, he would like to come to our board and give an update because as we know, there's been a lot of changes over there and updates. So Dr. Baker and I'll look at the agenda and try to figure out when is best to bring him because I know we have full agendas. And then, let's see, CSBA, I've had a bunch of committee meetings there with climate action, finance and board development. And I actually have a board meeting this Saturday with them. So fully CSBA and I'll report back if there's anything of interest there. And I will say in all of those committee meetings, one of the things is board members up and down the state are dealing with the same things we're dealing with. And it's been really hard because so many parents and teachers and staff want different things, given where we're at. And so I think there's been a lot of commiseration around not being able to make everybody happy. And, you know, I think we're all experiencing that. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but I guess, you know, we're all in this together. It's, it's very similar to what I'm hearing up and down the state. And then we also had another equity meeting. And I know we've put together some draft vision and mission work. And I think we're going to do that at the next board meeting from 6:00 to 7:00. Is that right?
So I wanted to make sure, we, we asked board members and did we get a yes from each per board member, they could do 6:00?
I think so, on March 24th, yeah. Anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll get to the calendar in a minute, but I just wanted to say that I, I know we had another equity meeting. Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Baker. Policy meeting too, unless Wendy already mentioned that.
Yeah, you had a policy. No, everything you've said, I just want to, you know, for the superintendent's advisory council, it's really great to have the parents because they give you another viewpoint and the discussion. So I, I really look forward to those. So I appreciate it. Just need to make sure that we, make sure that our parents get their sentiment extra, an extra reminder. I know more than does, we sent several, but we used to, we did. Make sure that we, we get them there. No, that's it, and that's it for me. But I've been to the other items, except I could not make the chamber meeting. So Janet did that piece for me, the update or whatever, you know, we have to do.
Myself. Okay, so information, any correspondence? Other than all the emails we're getting? Go ahead, Janet.
I got some emails about the fencing, which is why the fencing around the campuses. That's one of the reasons I brought it up today. I think that's it.
Lots on reopening, all sorts of ideas of what people want. Okay. Other business suggested items for future agenda, I did mention the RCEF, so we'll try to figure out when we can have that. Anything else we want to be adding to our agenda?
We just, just to make sure about the 24th, now it's 6 o'clock. It's, okay.
Yeah, so what we were hoping to do is have a study session around equity and relooking at the vision and mission. So there's been a small group that's put together a draft, but we want everybody to take a look at it. So we're hoping that March 24, 6 to 7 for equity. And then I was thinking, let's make sure we advertise that because I know we have a lot of our committee members and community members who might like to listen in. And then I was thinking, let's make sure we advertise that because I know we have a lot of our committee members and community members who might like to listen in and comment.
It would be great to get a list of the community members and those that participated so we can send them an email. Maybe they can, you know, put it on the calendar so they can also give it.
And I don't know if there's a way, Eliana, when we highlight the agenda on the. Website, because I think it often just shows 7 o'clock start time. And then if there's a closed session, you have to go into the agenda to see it. So particularly with the equity and then actually two weeks following, we're hoping to have the workforce housing from 6 to 7. Or mostly just doing that because we need more time. If we start at 7, it's going to make for a really long night. So if there's a way. It because they're not closed sessions. They're actually open sessions, but we're starting at 6 instead of 7. So I don't know. Let's just think about how we do that to make sure that it's clear to the community. You know, maybe there's even a, I don't know if you can call it a special meeting before like 6 to 7, so it's highlighted. You know what I mean?
I think Ellie was going to, Ellie, we had talked about it. I think she said something regarding the. It's a study session, so it could be like two agendas. Is that what I heard you say, Ellie? Right?
That would, that would be great. Thank you. Because I just think let's highlight those so people know when they look at the website.
Okay, and one more thing, we might possibly have a closed session for the 24th. So would we have closed session at 5 o'clock?
It depends. Wendy would need to determine that would be 5 or we do it at 5:30.
At this point, it could be 5:30.
5:30 is better. If I get a vote on that one, I'll just share that.
Yeah, that would be, yeah. Okay.
And, you know, worst case, we can always, if we need more time, we can always finish it at the end of the meeting.
Correct.
Remember when we used to do closed sessions starting at 11:00 or midnight sometimes? Mike, you missed, those were the good old days.
And by then, you're so tired. You're so tired at that point.
All right, well, a new board policy should help with that. We're still within our 10:45. Okay, let's see, calendar, I think we just covered that. So I guess, yeah, I guess we're about done unless there's anything else I missed. Okay, all right. Well, good work, everybody.
Every.
Oh, and I guess I guess I needed an adjournment motion.
So moved.
All right, so yeah, and then Janet is a second. And I think we can all do a thumbs up. All right, great. Okay, thanks. Thanks to the audience who stuck with us the whole night.